I'd like to tell folks at home, this might be a little clunky because some of us don't have really good internet where we are. So if we disappear or our faces disappear, at least you'll understand why. In accordance with the executive order N-08-21, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors meetings are being held virtually. You can participate via Zoom call and phone number, which is located on your screen and on the front of the agenda. So at this time, I'd like to ask Tracy to please do roll call.
Morning. Supervisor Bone?
Hi.
Supervisor Bass?
Here.
Supervisor Wilson?
Aki.
Supervisor Madrone?
Here.
Thank you. And Supervisor Bushnell?
Here.
Great. Everyone's present. Thank you, Chair.
Alrighty. So for those of you who want to call in and make comment, just a reminder, you're going to raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone at the beginning of the item you're interested in talking about, or pressing the hand icon. When your number is called, press star six to unmute yourself. You'll have three minutes to speak, and we're consistent on that three-minute time limit. Excuse me. That wasn't supposed to be the right ding. But when you have 30 seconds left, you will hear this sound. A little louder, Tracy. And at the end of your time to speak, you will hear that sound repeatedly telling you that it's time to move on. Don't take it personally if we cut you off at that point. It's the same for everyone. And we're just working under little different circumstances today. It's a little harder to coordinate. So I'd like to ask our Acting CIO Hayes, are there any modifications to the agenda?
There are modifications for the item concerning the Humboldt County Convention and Visitors Bureau, item D-8. There was a page missing in the contract, so we would like to swap that out. Also, item D-5 for the Cuban Freedom Fighters and item D-19 for the COVID update have both been pulled from consent.
Thank you. I have a question. You said the D-8 with the page missing. Are we having discussion on that one too, or is that just fixing the missing page?
That's just fixing the missing page.
Okay, so that is staying on consent without modification?
Correct.
Correct. Alright, thank you. So given that, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar with the modifications just mentioned to pulling item D-5 and D-9, as well as correcting D-8, which will not be pulled, but will be corrected? Someone can say that better than me.
I can say it by so moved.
I think Tracy knows what I mean. Is there a second? Okay, we got a second.
Second with a comment.
Okay. Wait, I think we have multiple seconds, but yes, Supervisor Bone. Are you on your phone or your computer, by the way?
I'm on my computer and yeah. So I can see you guys.
Can you see us?
I can see you.
You should have that raise hand thing at the bottom of the screen. This would be a great time to practice on that, just so we know you want to talk. But yes, please do make your comment.
Yeah, okay. Well, there's two things. On item number 31, on the broadband, on the broadband, I would like to make sure that as we plan for this, we have broadband connectivity. We dig once and we put accessibility to broadband along the trail to CR with the cable landings and everything going on. Asking Caltrans is problematic with disrupting their service. So if we're going to build the trail, can we make sure that we build the broadband into it? And it may be, but as we do, I'd like to make sure that happens. So that's just a shot across the bow. And then the other thing is, is I'd like to recognize Open Door. 50 years, I remember them in the little library as a 17-year-old high school student. So I remember them opening over there. And it was a small little place, and what they've expanded to. And I think it's 74% of our community actually uses Open Door in one way or another, which has turned them into a medical giant in our local community, and they provide great services. So there is a resolution, you know, where 2021 marks their 50th anniversary. I will not read it. It is in the record. But I thought we would be negligent if we didn't at least recognize Open Door for all their great work and what they've provided for our community.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone. Supervisor Wilson?
Thanks. Yeah, I actually on both those items. One, thank you, Rex, for putting the 50-year anniversary of Open Door on the calendar. I want a resolution recognizing that 50 years is when the community clinics movement started in the United States and really in California and launched not just Open Door, but United Indian Health Services and community clinics across the United States. And really, they're just part of a movement of providing health care really at the grassroots level. And now, in the way things are moving, it's really the sustainable model to keep things going until we get a universal health coverage in some way, shape, or form. And then also, I just want to point out, I agree with Rex with relationship to our review or understanding of trying to co-locate useful utilities like broadband on the rail corridor. This is why rail banking is really important. This is one of the reasons why we support rail banking, which is to utilize former rail corridors for the purposes, not just trails, but also access for other utilities and those sorts of things. So it's important that we understand that that's all part of the equation. And I look forward to a trail that connects CR to Humboldt State someday in the near future. That'll be awesome. Thanks.
Hey, and I was, thank you. I was reminded that we did not do the Pledge of Allegiance. You were talking about the flag for all this time. A little discombobulated today. So thank you, Jeff Dolph, for letting me, reminding me. And we will go back to that if it's okay with everybody after consent. I don't know if there's a release, we can do it now, but I just prefer we proceed with this and go back and do it. I did want to say, I had a question, I received a question on item D-28 regarding the town of Samoa. And the language in the item made it sound like the general fund was paying for everything. And so clarification, is it costs are paid by the applicant? Those dollars go into the general fund, and staff is paid out of the general fund. So it is paid by the applicant, so I wanted to clarify that before public comment. Anyone else want to make a comment before we take information from the public? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we'll go to attendees. And the hands up, there are four. I'm trying to find them. Alright, so we have the first attendee, and Tracy, let me know if I'm right. I see 2903 as the first hand up?
That's correct, Chair Bass.
Great. And this is for comment on the consent calendar. So 2903, press star six to unmute. Are you there? Star six to unmute.
Hold on, Chair, it's me. There we go.
Oh, thank you. Welcome, and you'll have three minutes to talk on the consent calendar. Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can now. Is this on the consent calendar?
I wanted to make a comment on the Cuba resolution.
Okay. Well, actually, that one's being pulled, and we will discuss it later in the morning.
Okay, well, then, when are you going to discuss it?
We can't guarantee a time on that. It should be coming hopefully before 10 o'clock, because we have a time set, but I can't guarantee when we're actually going to be able to discuss it. But I suggest, you're welcome. Alright, 5087, if you're wanting to speak on the consent calendar, press star six to unmute.
It looks like they fell off, Chair Bass.
That's weird. Okay. Well, good, that was, they must have wanted to talk on the consent calendar. Alright, so next we're going to go to the last four digits of 0326. And if you were 0326 and want to talk on the consent calendar, press star six to unmute.
This is Charles Wilson.
Alright, welcome, Charles. Is this on the consent calendar?
I wanted to make a general comment on the health or the vaccines there.
Well, that is, we will be having a discussion. That one will be coming up shortly after this item. It was pulled from the consent calendar, so your time to speak will actually be when it's being discussed, brought to the public. So just hang on. You can take your hand down, and we will certainly be back to Mr. Wilson. Alright, 74, oh, 7454, Kent, star six, and you will have your three minutes.
Virginia, before you start my three minutes, unfortunately, I did not hear what was pulled from consent. Could you just give me those numbers quickly so I don't violate your request not to speak at this time? What was pulled from consent? Do you hear me?
Through the chair, I can respond to that. Do you want to say her?
Okay.
Is, Kent, item D-5 and item D-19 were both pulled from consent calendar.
Thank you very much. Now I will go ahead and speak. There's item one, which wasn't pulled. It was called Be Safe, and very interesting. One of the most important components in our environment is being allotted $7,232.25 to protect the bee population. And for anybody who knows Mother Nature's system, without the bees, we would most likely not be here. We would have strictly GMOed things. Currently, toxins are killing the bees all over. I would guess if probably bees were necessary to pollinate cannabis flower, you would be adding two or three zeros to that one. Let's see, 19, Public Health has been pulled, I think, let's see. Well, I think that pretty well, Virginia answered my question. Thank you very much for money pulled out of the general fund. It'd be very nice if that was a little more clear on your agenda as far as funding, because I always check into that particular one. So I guess from what Virginia said, Public Health, although it's on here, and, well, Public Health does have something. Was 22 wasn't pulled? I think there's $5 million on there, and I thought consent was supposed to be for small inconsequential items like this, that, and the other. I would request in the future, anytime you have $5 million being spent of the public's money in any way, shape, or form, that a presentation be made on how that's going to be spent specifically, and so that we can kind of have a little more understanding on the exact details of where our money goes on a daily basis. Thank you for my opportunity to speak on your consent items today.
Alright, thank you, Kent. And it looks like my internet is unstable, so thank you for jumping in, anyone else on the team, when I seem to disappear. So we have 9334 is the next hand I see up. If you're wishing to talk on the consent calendar, now's your time enough, three minutes, so press star six to unmute. You're 9334. There you go. Welcome.
Hey, Dennis Mayo here. I wanted to say something about the Open Door Clinic. I would be very remiss in not giving great kudos to where we've come. As a founding member of the Open Door Clinic, and it's actually its first director, I am just blown away at where we've gone. I have to mention Gary Shapiro. Gary was our wellspring and tireless, and he got people like me to stop milking cows in the afternoon and come donate my lumber to help remodel our first building there in Arcata, where the, help me out, everybody, the bookstore is now. So anyway, oh my God, what great things come from little sparks of personal ideas. So congratulations, Open Door.
Thank you, Dennis. Our next speaker is 0151, and as far as I can tell, that's the last speaker on the consent calendar items that we're discussing. So I believe that would be Dottie. Welcome.
Good morning. Good morning. I see that there's an item on accessory dwellings. Is that going to be spoken about? Or is it just something that I should talk about right this minute?
I do not believe it's been pulled, so just talk about it now. It would be perfect.
Okay, so accessory dwellings are critical for people to stay alive. I'm a little bit emotional this morning. I just said some prayers over the phone with a fellow that had his blankets and pillows at the town square in Southern Humboldt while the coroner came to get him. So we have to do better. This person was a resident of Humboldt County and had been here for a long time. And there's other people that are not well, that need to get into someplace fast. Instead of trying to do everything perfect, let's do something a little less perfect, but perfectly have these people inside, so they're not passing away on a park bench. Any place in Humboldt County, 2005, we adopted ending homelessness. And it's been a long time and a long struggle. And as you know, the Christian Science Church was torn down because we were letting a homeless person stay there. So we can all work together much better and much nicer. I'm not going to say the name of the person that passed away this morning, because the family has been notified. But out of respect, I just want to say that in the spirit of keeping everybody alive, let's keep his spirit and the idea of him being a part of our community and lead us forward into doing better and to take better care of the people that we should all be loving.
Okay, thank you, Dottie. I think I may have let the conversation or comment go a little far afield there, but I appreciate the sentiment. And we do have one more hand up from the public. It's 1360. And if you can press star six to unmute and speak about items that are on the consent calendar. We'll do 1360, press star six to unmute. Tracy, are they unmuted? There they go. Thank you. All coming in. No worries.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, and you have three minutes to speak on items that are on the consent calendar.
Okay, this is Richard Marks from the Construction Industry Force Account Council. And I noticed you had an item 29, which was a bid award authorization for storm damage repair to telegraph creek corrode. And when I was looking through the bid results, I noticed that the contractor, who is going to be awarded this, was actually, has expired Department of Industrial Relations permitted the number. So I was just going to let you know that that might be needed to be looked at. That's it.
Alright, thank you for calling, Richard. And I see no other hands up for public comment. Tracy, you don't see any either?
That should conclude public comment, Chair.
Okay, thank you. And I know Supervisor Bushnell has her hand up.
Thank you. Through the chair, I just wanted to address one of the commenters and about DHHS funding. And those are grant-based dollars, and that's why they're on there. So I just wanted to address that.
And thank you, Supervisor Bushnell. Any other board members have a comment before we move forward and vote? Alright, seeing none, Tracy, can you please do a roll call vote?
Yes, Chair Bass, on the consent item, Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Sorry, my computer's glitching a bit. Yes, yes, and yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madrone?
Yes.
Pass is five zero. Thank you, Chair.
Alright, thank you. And thanks for the sharp eye of Jeff Dolph. We're going to go a bit backwards. And we are going to do the flag salute. As I said, we're all calling from various locations, so the one with the flag is me. So salute the flag, while in Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Mike. That's even better. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Supervisor Wilson did remind me that my screen is the one that shows because I'm talking. So next time, we'll just have him do the pledge, and we'll get it both. Alright, I'm going to move on to the next item. It'll be items consent. We're going to go onto public comment on items that are not on the agenda today. And again, you have three minutes to comment on a general subject that is not included on our agenda. If you wish to do so, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute yourself when your number is called. And at this point, I do see two hands up. Excuse me. So our first commenter will be 7429, followed by 7454. So 7429, just press star six to unmute.
Good morning. Normally, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors doesn't tend to, does not tend to spend time and energy on international and national political issues.
Excuse me, ma'am, that one is actually, that is actually on our agenda. So this is the time to talk about items that are not on our agenda?
Actually, I was going to speak to a consent item that was pulled.
You'll have a chance to speak on that when we get it. We'll be talking about it separately.
About the consent item that was pulled? Oh, okay. I'm very sorry.
Oh, no worries. It's a little confusing at times. Thanks. And we'll talk, we'll hear from you shortly. So we have 7454, I believe that is Kent, so you'll have three minutes, and welcome.
Virginia, can you hear me now?
Yes.
So I don't quite understand what just happened here. I guess it's passed, or maybe I could speak. Richard Marks made a statement there that I believe precluded you from moving forward with the consent item, and you did it anyway. Maybe you didn't understand what he was saying. I always back what Richard says. Anyway, I was to speak today on transportation. I don't see that specifically on there. When I learn about transportation, I do research, and a lot of it's how Mother Nature does it. Have you ever seen cutter ants? And there you'll see a line of ants that are just nothing but green leaves waving in the wind, going one direction and ants going the other direction. That's how transportation is done, effectively and efficiently. Of course, your road system's done that way, so I guess we copied the ants on that one. And now we're going to talk about train transportation. So train transportation is probably with electric trains or hydro-powered trains or future technology. The great iron horse probably is coming back. And that's something you really didn't allow for in your general plan. I know Mike Wilson was speaking a little earlier. And I think it's really poor that you haven't done that and don't understand how this works. Current railroad transportation, that train does not stop. It doesn't pull on to sidings. It requires two parallel lines. The design work that was done on your trail system, both currently put in between Arcata and Breakout and the one proposed, really doesn't quite understand what the future is regarding transportation. Myself and other people suggested, well, why didn't you put it on the other side of one-on-one? We're not going to have to pull it back out. So I'm very disappointed in the short-sightedness of, well, I have to say it, you know, Mike Wilson, Mike McGuire, Jason Lyles, and the other people in not understanding the long-term and short-term consequences of this. These people have staked their political careers on what some of us refer to as the great Redwood Hobo Express. And should that not come to fruition, and should these trails have to be relocated because of not using common sense? I don't know. That does tend to end political careers. Virginia, I just got muted and unmuted. I'm not quite understanding.
Well, we're doing this all in a different, kind of, it's a little bit different today.
Do I have any, do I have any time left to wrap up, or where I'm at on my time?
That's Tracy. I don't know how you have.
You still have 30 seconds.
Thank you, Tracy and Virginia. So I'd like to say that when it came time to building this trail, I recommended that Mr. McGuire, I guess Senator McGuire, and the powers that be put Steve Madrone on this trail project. Well, he had good karma. And on the opposite of the spectrum, I feel that you have the karma of these other people that I've mentioned. And so unfortunately, I'm not optimistic. If Steve Madrone would have been put in charge of this, I think our odds would have been greatly improved. Always appreciate Mr. Madrone's participation in such things as trails. He knows what he's doing.
Did we lose Virginia?
It does look like she is froze.
Okay.
There is one more public comment. Vice Chair Wilson.
Sure.
Caller ending in 7094, please unmute yourself and press star six to continue. Go ahead, caller. 7094.
Alright, so we're doing 7094?
Yes, I've asked them to unmute, and I'm not seeing anything.
That sounds similar. It might have been the number of the person who had meant to speak on the item that was pulled coming up later. I thought I recognized that number, so. Alright, so are you seeing any more, Tracy?
I do not see any more public comment. If anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand.
Okay, and I'm going to let you all know, I got to jump off. I've got some kind of family medical issues that are happening right now. So Supervisor Wilson will at least take over for me for now as vice chair, and I will hopefully be back shortly.
Thank you. And Supervisor Wilson, I do see a hand raised. Public ending in 0326.
Yeah, I see it there. Do.
Please press star six to unmute yourself. There they go.
This is Charles Wilson again. I had my comments on the health vaccines there. I have a little difficulty because the Army did my ears in, and I'm not quite following. And I hope you'll let me know when I can talk there on the vaccines there.
We will let you know. It'll be announced. The staff will be giving a report related to our COVID response. And so when that happens, you'll have your time to speak.
Okay, thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Alright, so is that it for public comment for things not on the agenda? Tracy?
There is one more attendee in 0151. Please press star six, and you're unmuted.
Hello, this is Dottie Russell again from Southern Humboldt. I would like for you, and I don't know how to do this, if it's an emergency or what, but I think that we should pause. but I think that we should pause any demolishing of buildings right now. That, that camp in Trinidad is about to have, have some buildings demolished. I think it was a big mistake taking down a church that was historical and now you're, you know, you've opted to do something else. But let's just pause it. Let's have a time to think. Let's have a time to process this. Because we really have to be addressing these things. And, and, and it, it, it's obviously life and death, but more than that, we're getting grant money to set up a campground, which is important. To set up a campground, people will be sleeping in tents, but if there's an accessory dwelling, if there's a building that's not quite the way you want it, then forget the permits. Just let, let these people, you know, do things. I mean, we can't really wait any longer. We, we all can do better. We all can be creative. In 2005 and the general plan, we were all talking about doing things and having gray water systems and composting toilets and, and trying to do something innovative. So let's get the yee-haw place and take pictures and then take that to where we're going to have a grant money to have tents and figure out how to do it like Dignity Village in Oregon. Why do, California is such a great place and Humboldt County is so beautiful. Why do we have to...
Give me the show. Tell me I can talk to, okay, to people on the same phone.
How's Dottie doing on her time? And, and it seems like there was a bit of an interruption. You're muted.
Am I...
Yes? Tracy, did Dottie, Dottie have any more time? You're muted Tracy.
She had 30 seconds left.
Okay. Dottie, do you want your 30 seconds more? Okay.
Yeah, so, hi, it's me again. So, so let's figure this whole thing out. Let's not cause any more problems. Let's not make a mistake. I want you to know that on behalf of the Christian Science Church, we are offering to give you $20,000. So I'm trying to get that through, but somehow they're changing who the county council is, and I can't get that through. It's a gift. It's a gift of $20,000. We shouldn't be charged anything. The church was taken down, but we will do that because we need peace. We need to work together. And we need to stop all of this craziness and fighting so that we can all be okay and survive.
Okay. Thank you Dottie, for that. Is there any more public comment on items not on the agenda today?
That's all the public comment Supervisor Wilson.
Thank you. And correct me if I'm wrong, we'll be moving to items pulled from consent?
That is correct.
Alright, so the next item we're talking about or discussing is D eight, I believe, pulled from consent, which it's not, that was a Cuban one, sorry. It's the Cuban one. Which number was that?
D five would be the first item of Vice Chair.
Jump in here like this, then write down the numbers. Alright, so D five. We're going to talk about D five if we can, and I'll start with, I think this was put on the agenda by Rex. It's been pulled by at least one or two other board members, including myself. And so I'll ask Rex to speak to it first, and then we can start from there.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, this was, I had numerous folks in our community ask, bring this forward. And I worked, made a simple resolution. I kind of followed what they, it was, it was kind of off the Senate. Foreign Relations Committee put a resolution forward with 24 senators signing on Ted Cruz, Cory Booker, Bob Mendelsohn, and kind of followed off that because of the couple of things. The loss of internet in Cuba during the recent uprising. And basically, it was just, you know, we've, we've been talking about this, and there's another uprising, and we don't want to reenact the Bay of Pigs accordingly. But it would like, I would like to see them be a little more liberated in Cuba, unless you think everything's going okay in Cuba. And if you do, that, that's great. It doesn't seem like it. So that's why it's on there. I know it might be a little harsh, but I was following and agreed with the guidance from some people in our community. And I bet that two people would pull it, so.
Well, any other comments from board members before we? I just want to say, if you, if you think something's going to get pulled from consent, it probably shouldn't go on consent. I mean, that's kind of the point of consent. So...
Thank you for that.
Just seems to me. So from that, I, I'll move to a board member who raised their hands first, and then I'll move to public comment. Board members want to raise their hands, talk about this at all? Or we, Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, thank you Chair, or Vice Chair. No, I appreciate the sentiment here. I just, this, this is an international issue, and it just seems way outside our wheelhouse. We have so many issues here locally to be dealing with. So that was my main reason for pulling it. It just seems way outside of what we normally engage in. So I'll just leave it at that. I also think it's a very complicated issue. It's not so easy to, to decipher in a short period of time.
Great, thank you Supervisor Madron. There's not more comment from, from the board supervisors. I'm going to move to the public. Oh Rex, did you want to, did you want to talk some more now?
Yeah, and I, I agree with Supervisor Madron 100%. And if we did a board policy where we didn't get involved with anything international or outside the lines of Humboldt County, I would be for that. But this is just, we, we do this quite often, and I can go back. I mean, climate change affects us locally, but I mean, it's more of an international. Whatever we do is not going to affect it. We can sure be a piece of that pie. And so we, we try to do everything we can along those lines. So I, I think there's other things we've done. I didn't even consider that, that we should keep everything local. But if we want to in the future, I would be, I'm good with that. But I just thought that we also have to answer to the people of Humboldt County who ask us to do these things. And, and that's what I did. I responded to people that asked. And I'm sure we have people of Cuban descent, I know we do, in Humboldt County that are very concerned about this.
Okay, appreciate that perspective. Okay, we're going to move to public comment right now, we can. Let's see, so the first one I see in the queue is public commenter numbers, last four digits of seven four two nine. If you can unmute by pressing star six, we can hear you, what you have to say, you have three minutes. Are you there, seven four two nine?
Yeah, good morning. So I was surprised to see the enthusiastic proclamation for the Freedom Fighters of Cuba on the consent agenda. And I certainly do not object to supporting the people of Cuba. But I'd like to add that your board could also, if you want to get into this type of politics, could also proclaim support for prioritizing humanitarian aid to Cuba. Support removing the 63-year-old United States embargo on Cuba. You could support also removing the limitations on aid and lift sanctions that are being held by US policy. And that would include removing bans on restrictions on remittances set by people in the US to their families in Cuba. So I don't think that we can both simultaneously stand with the people of Cuba and subject them to draconian conditions of isolation and hunger. So I agree that this is a very complicated issue. And I thank you for the time.
I appreciate that. Moving on to the next public commenter, last four digits of two nine oh three. Please unmute by pressing star six, and let's hear what you have to say. Again, that's last four digits of two nine oh three.
Hello?
Hello? We can hear you.
Hello. Okay. Yes, the United Nations just voted 142 countries, to two countries, to remove the, the US blockade against Cuba. That's like the 29th year in a row. And the only two countries out of the whole world that continue to support this blockade are the United States and Israel. So I, I think it's important that you address international issues so that the local community can know where you stand. Because the supporters of this coup, the so-called Cuban refugees within the fascist organization, the Proud Boys, the leader of the Proud Boys is a so-called Cuban refugee who is a longtime FBI informant and attempted to launch a coup in this, on our, this country right here, on the Capitol. January 6th, I don't know if everybody remembers that. But the President of the United States very much helped to instigate this, this nationalist and fascist fervor. We can see that from all of the white nationalists and neo-Nazi organizations involved in that coup at the Capitol. That's who I'm talking about. Yes, Donald Trump also, in the United States, also launched a neo-Nazi coup in Bolivia during his presidency, which, you know, the United States certainly didn't object to. So, and the policy hasn't changed under Biden either. So we have Democrats and Republicans both pushing this so-called freedom and democracy movements in these countries while literally being the world's largest sponsor of neo-Nazism. With Luis Fernando Camacho there in Bolivia that the US backed. Or even under Obama and Biden backing the neo-Nazi coup in the Ukraine in 2014. The United States is the largest sponsor of radical elements in the world. Just look at Reagan in Afghanistan. Afghanistan was one of the most liberal democracies in the whole Middle East, and they overthrew that country. So I mean, look at all of our Mong neighbors that are here in Eureka. The only reason there's Mong people in Wisconsin and in Eureka is because the United States supposedly supporting freedom and democracy went to Laos and gave drug lords poppy growers. And we know the United States loves poppy growers and opium from the 20-year-long occupation of Afghanistan that has skyrocketed their opium production. We know they love them. They funded a child army, the Mong army, in Laos, with majority under 16 years old. And the United States sent the CIA over there with briefcases of money. These are documentaries you can find produced by America. This is, this is what happened. So to think that the United States is supporting freedom and democracy in Cuba after they illegally occupied Guantanamo Bay.
Okay, Speaker, sorry, your time is up, and appreciate your talking to us today. Next person we have in line is, is ending in seven four five four. Please unmute your number ending in seven four five four. You have three minutes to talk on this item.
Well, it's a very interesting conversation. I do understand that the people there have been exposed to all kinds of negativity, and it, it does, I do concur, a lot of it's come from the United States and its international politics. I always find it interesting. Maybe we should pay more attention to our local politics a little bit more. I don't have any problem with the resolution. Maybe change it and incorporate some of the ideas that the public speaker, first public speaker had there. They seemed very productive. If I recall, she had specific ideas for addition, to bring this back at another meeting and put a vote to it. I think that would be totally appropriate. I haven't heard anybody actually call in, unfortunately, that is the people that Rex referred to that have concerns. I can understand their concerns. And, you know, I have the same concerns regarding international locally. And there's, there's a lot of, a lot of information that basically the United States government dumped the drug business here in the Green Triangle, and didn't object to it, facilitated it for a whole bunch of reasons. So they, they do the same covert ops in, in California and Humboldt County, right here in our back, backwoods. And that's disturbing to me to see them doing this. So regarding this specific thing, I recommend you tune it up, bring it back. And if it gets three votes, then go ahead and send it off. Again, I don't object to you engaging in international politics. But it would be best to have a procedure, procedure and policy and protocol for doing so, and either do it or don't do it. That's just my recommendation. Thank you for my three minutes or a little less on this topic.
Okay, next person in line is last four digits of nine three three four. That's last four digits in nine three three four. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Can. Thank you for commenting.
Oh, hi. Hey, Dennis Mail here. You know, the board has for years addressed international issues. Icly for many years ago was a prime one that I remember. But the reality is that the Cuban people are slaves to a hammer and sickle. The Marxism permeates many facets of the world and even America, and that's too bad. But how could an enlightened, caring society not support, in solidarity, these valiant people's quest for their autonomy and their self-determination and their own freedom? This resolution supports the past, the present, and the future as we all strive to continue our growth in creating a more equitable world. Our statement of support for the Cuba Libra movement speaks to the highest calling of our humanity. Ask yourself, in large or small actions that we undertake, what will you do to advance the human condition? Simply put, I think that this resolution is one significant effort in those, in that movement forward. So I support this resolution. I think it's one among many steps. You, you don't let the absolute perfect destroy the possibility of betterment. We can, we can approach many aspects of foreign relations that we don't have any control over and spend lots of time talking about it. But this is something that's significant and meaningful, and we can do it and feel good about it. We're not going to change the world with this resolution. But by golly, we can do a good thing here today. And so I appreciate you supporting it. I do have a technical question. Since Supervisor Bass is gone, is she going to be able to vote on this or not? And I have a concern about that.
She is not here. She cannot vote on this item. So is that time for the speaker? Or do we move on to the next speaker?
I'm done. Thank you so much for my time.
Thank you for commenting today. So Tracy, I see hands up, but they're not callers necessarily. So how do we operate that? Do we just call out their names and ask them to unmute and start talking?
Yes, Vice Chair Wilson, if you could just perhaps use their first name. And then there are some other numbers down farther in the queue.
Yeah, okay. So I'm just going to go from the top of the list that's on my screen. I don't know how arbitrary that is, but here we go. The first speaker I have is, I'm going to try my best for pronunciation, which is Shaja Asgajid. And tell me if I'm even close, please.
Yeah, sorry, I meant to put my name in there. It's Emily.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Hi, the United States has a long and bloody history of coups and regime change operations, including in Iran, Guatemala, Congo, Greece, Chile, Nicaragua, Afghanistan, Iraq, Yugoslavia, Libya, Ukraine, and elsewhere. Rex, I know you grew up during the Cold War and that you were fed this propaganda that Cuba was an aggressor, but this narrative is... Um, Rex, I know you grew up during the Cold War and that you were fed this propaganda that Cuba was an aggressor, but this narrative is false. The world knows this to be false and the American people are waking up out of their American exceptionalism to see the true face of American imperialism. Currently, the United States has a homelessness problem, an addiction problem, a joblessness problem, crumbling infrastructure, some of the worst healthcare, a very poor public education system. But still we stand here calling Cuba corrupt and dysfunctional. To see dysfunctional, to see a dysfunctional government look no further than the tip of your nose. Any day now, eleven million families will be kicked out on the street by no fault of their own, but because COVID and the poor response of our federal and local government to take care of the citizens. Cuba, in Cuba, housing is a human right. Cuba sends its medical, medical, medical brigades all over the world to fight some of the most deadliest outbreaks from Ebola to COVID, to offering to send brigades to help after Hurricane Katrina, which Bush denied them access to help. Even with a fifty-year-old blockade, Cuba was still willing to help those in need after Hurricane Katrina. Cuba stands for humanity. While we are here paying you, Rex Bone, to bring this resolution to this meeting, the streets are full of homeless, small businesses are suffering, children all over the county have had little to no education over the past few years. Food pantries have run out of food and their facilities are so dilapidated that they had to be shut down during the pandemic. Our hospitals can't maintain healthcare workers because of privatization of medicine as Providence shuts down needed departments, lays off frontline workers and puts their employees in dangerous situations. As all this is happening right here in Humboldt County, you're gonna waste our time and money putting down Cuba in a Humboldt County resolution? I, I do appreciate actually that you brought this to the attention of the community because I think it's a good time for us to educate each other. And I also think that we should be supporting people all around the world and not sanctioning them and not putting witness tests on how to, how to help the people in our own community. We should just be helping them.
Okay, Emily, thank you, that was three minutes, appreciate the comments. And we're gonna move on to the next, uh, person. And that is, uh, a public member with the last four digits of three, eight, five, six. So if you are three, eight, five, six, please unmute yourself. There you go. You, we can hear you. All right, thought I could hear you, what happened? Three, eight, five, six. Unmute yourself, please.
Okay, now, is that good?
You can hear you.
My name is Hannah and, um, I'm just gonna jump right in. So supporters of the Cuban revolution call this economic war a blockade, not an embargo like the corporate media. This is because the US government is not only preventing its own citizens and businesses from trading with Cuba, it also stops trade with foreign entities that do business with Cuba. In essence, the United States makes companies choose between doing business in the United States, a twenty trillion dollar economy, or in Cuba. Again, this blockade is making it so Cuba cannot trade with any country that relies on trade with the US, meaning Cuba has no access to essential imports that keep the country and the people alive. These things include gas, metal, medical supplies for treating COVID and performing surgeries, among other things. And I'm gonna keep it short, but, um, in finale, I'm extremely against this resolution. Um, and in support of what many of the people on here said, for example, Emily, who just spoke. Um, after reading the resolution, I noticed the information goes against the sentiments of the Cuban people um, who are actually defending their government and what is happening in Cuba. Um, but they are going against the US blockade because it is suffocating people. The Cuban people and protesters are in support of their own government. It is the United States that is killing them, thank you.
Okay, thank you for those comments. We have, uh, the next public commenter is ending in, uh, five, zero, eight, eight. So if your number ends in five, zero, eight, eight, please press star six and, or whatever we're supposed to be pressing and start talking. You have three minutes.
Oh, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Uh, fabulous. Well, I'd like to begin by saying that, uh, upon reading the resolution, uh, from the very beginning, it's fundamentally flawed. Uh, the claim that the state is withholding food, medicine and electricity is not true. Uh, famously, Cuba provides all of its people with, uh, food, energy and especially healthcare, which it's world famous for. Uh, as someone's mentioned before, they send doctors all over the world. Doctors are the biggest export of Cuba. Um, so from the, from the very beginning, the resolution is, is founded on lies, uh, propaganda. Uh, secondly, the freedom fighters, the uprising that's been mentioned before was, uh, a few hundred to a couple thousand people as opposed to millions who have subsequently come out in support of the government in Cuba. You don't see that covered nearly as much in, uh, corporate media. Um, and of course, I feel like the whole thing is a little bit hypocritical, isn't it? Uh, I mean, uh, there's certainly a place for international politics at this level, especially where it impacts the community directly. Speaking of course, uh, on climate change, where that directly affects our rivers and our woods. But, um, I mean, you can't walk two blocks in this county without running into people that are being denied, you know, shelter, electricity, food and medicine. Uh, shouldn't we deal with that before we deal with, uh, lives in another country? I mean, I mean, we were getting a caller just earlier, uh, toward the beginning of the meeting about people who are dying because they are being denied these things in this county. Um, pardon me, uh, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
All right, um, what was that? I feel like we should address, uh, these things domestically before we even think to look at them abroad. And, uh, as, as earlier callers were mentioning, if you want to look for a government that is denying the Cuban people these things, you shouldn't be looking at Havana, you should be looking in Washington DC and the blockade that has been keeping Cuba from participating in the international economy, literally choking their economy. That's not Cuba's fault, that's Washington's fault. That's all I gotta say.
Okay, thank you commenter. I just wanna say we have, I think, four more commenters on the line right now. We have an agenda item that's supposed to start, I believe, here at ten o'clock, um, that's scheduled. I'm gonna have us move forward and see if we can get through this, uh, quickly as we can. I'm gonna ask public commenters if you've heard something that you agree with from before, if you could maybe just reference that and, and, uh, help us on time. We have three minutes and I will allot you three minutes, but you don't have to use it, it's not required. You can, you can, you can be shorter if you want, it's okay. So, um, nonetheless, I don't wanna shut anyone down. If you have something new to say, please, please do so. Uh, public commenter five, zero, eight, seven, please, um, come on the line and tell us what you feel about this issue. That's, uh, five, zero, eight, seven, right?
Hello?
Actually, this is, um, Mr. Josh Lopez, sorry about that, Chair.
Oh, okay, Josh, sorry about that. Uh, well, Josh Lopez, jump right in.
That, that's all right. Um, yeah, I just wanna repeat what a few other people have said is that um, vast majority of, uh, countries around the world have voted against the blockade and the only two countries that voted for it were the United States and Israel. So I don't see how we can realistically blame the Cuban, Cuban government for not providing their citizens with essential things while we're simultaneously denying those things. Like, how could we be the ones preventing them from getting the resources they need to have a functioning society while also spitting in their face and saying, no. You know, it's not the government's fault when they aren't able to get resources they need from the international community. Um, on top of that, like other commentators have said, um, we have our own issues. We have homelessness everywhere. We have people dying in the streets like the, uh, earlier commenter said, which, you know, I'm, I'm sorry she had to experience that, that's awful. Um, yeah, I, I don't think, I mean, I support talking about international issues in local government. I think that's important. I think it's good to do, but, um, when, when we have our own problems, we're the direct cause for the Cuban issues. We, we shouldn't be supporting the overthrow of their government. We shouldn't be trying to do a soft coup when, you know, anyway, that, that's, that's all I have to say about this. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for commenting. All right, so the next commenter we have on the list is, uh, five, zero, eight, seven. That's last four digits of five, zero, eight, seven. Please unmute yourself and see what you have to say. All right, you gotta unmute yourself, five, zero, eight, seven, there you go. We can hear you now.
Great. Okay, so I just wanted to address the, um, specific language that, um, Supervisor Rex Bone uses in this resolution. Um, he talks about, uh, the denial of basic human needs like electricity, food and medical aid. Um, and those things are, both of those three, all of those three things are affected by the blockade. Um, uh, when we talk about electricity, uh, Cuba has set up an amazing network of COVID nineteen facilities, um, to basically take in people infected with COVID nineteen and, you know, quarantine them in a place where they can be treated. Um, rather than the US approach, which was to just leave people in their homes and let the disease spread and kill numerous people. Um, but for Cuba to operate these facilities, they need electricity. Um, and one of the things that the US-created blockade, um, has prevented from entering Cuba is gas. And so without the gas, there is, uh, electricity shortages. And so the government, um, has had to plan power outages to keep these COVID facilities running. Um, this was addressed, uh, in the beginning of the, the, uh, counter-government protests. There were a few sensationalized small protests, um, followed by some large, very large protests in support of the government. But when these small anti-government protests happened, the, um, the, what Rex Bone, uh, titled the tyranny of the communist regime, the president of Cuba actually went out personally and sat down and spoke with these protesters. He actually went out there and explained to them why there were electricity shortages, food shortages and medical aid shortages. It's because those things are all prevented from entering Cuba by the blockade. And I wanted to e- echo, uh, earlier commentators by saying that, you know, we have over half a million homeless people in the US. You know, this problem is, it is clear that the US is not working primarily to address these kinds of humanitarian problems. It's working to, you know, create geopolitical situations that benefit them. So it, it, so when locally we have, you know, dozens of homeless people in the streets who can't find a place to sleep because, you know, our council has made it so it's illegal to sleep in public places. Um, they've, you know, harassed the, our, our, our city council has harassed, uh, uh, Hatcher, the group that's, you know, actually helping people, um, you know, use drugs safely um, and, and not die from, um, from drug addiction. And we have like in the last few years, like, you know, the largest homeless encampment, the Devil's Playground was cleared out for tourism business, you know. So basically we have a situation where people, um, you know, there's no safe place, there's no place for these people to sleep. They're walking around, so they have to use, you know, drugs and stuff to, to stay awake, to, you know, get through that experience. And, you know, obviously the city council is worrying about, you know, capitalist interests. And so, so in the same way that the US is ignoring these issues, these humanitarian issues and doubling down on.
You get to three minutes?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize, I didn't, Tracy, could you, maybe you could raise your hand when we get to three minutes, I can see it. I saw you nodding, but I wasn't quite getting the cues, I apologize.
Right, so the first ring is thirty seconds, two rings is three minutes, and then I will just mute if you're not with me.
I apologize, and I apologize to the, to the commenter that I just wasn't, we don't, we're not in the same room, so we're having a bit of an issue here. So, uh, this is, uh, we have two more commenters. We, um, again, if we can, we've got another item that's gonna come up here. If you've heard what you, you, you know, said, you wanna agree with, that'd be great, would just be helpful. But nonetheless, you still get your three minutes, I'm happy to hear about it. So, uh, public commenter ten, ten, one, zero, one, zero, this is your time. Please, uh, unmute yourself and let us know how you feel.
Hi, this is Karen Brooks from Bayside. I'd like to comment on this matter, please.
Please do.
My, uh, my support is for the freedom fighters and for this resolution. We are American citizens. Uh, though it doesn't always seem that way, that we live our lives with liberty and freedom and can go about and go all over the world, do whatever we want. The people in Cuba are living under a communist regime. These people are not free to live their lives as they choose. They are not free to leave the country. Uh, they live under fear of persecution and jail and abuse. We can't forget, there's people all over the world that live in oppression. Humboldt County has a long history of civil rights and civil rights movement. This is something that would be a no-brainer, it should be a natural thing that we would support. Uh, oppressed people anywhere in this world, whether it's Iran, it's Hong Kong, it's, uh, Syria, it's, uh, um, Cuba, China, Myanmar. You know, there are communist regimes that are taking over a lot of parts of our country. We must make a stand. This resolution, you know, is not gonna do anything to liberate people in, in Cuba, but it lets the freedom fighters know this little place that celebrates the I-Block every year and sends, um, baseball equipment to Cuba so kids have something to play with, that Humboldt County cares. And I think that's the heart of our community. It definitely is a resolution, it may not be perfect, but it's a very strong statement to say, we support freedom, we support people who fight for their freedom and liberty so they one day can be free. And I believe that this regime is going to fall apart. And I just pray that the people can chart their own destiny and have a government that works for them, where their buildings aren't crumbling, their cars aren't so outdated, that they have internet. I mean, the government is suppressing the media and the internet. How can that be anything, any Marxist person would support, uh, this regime and be against this resolution? Um, that's about all I just wanna say. I just strongly encourage the Board of Supervisors to vote in favor of this. And again, uh, be consistent with the civil rights movements that we stand behind in this county. And thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right, so we have one last speaker, that's, uh, four, zero, one, one, ending in four, zero, one, one. Please unmute yourself and start talking. There you go, we can hear you now.
Hi, my name is Yamal Kaa. I'm a Pomo Indian from Sonoma County and I'm also Chamuru from Guam. And I'd like to point out that the United States invaded Cuba and illegally occupied Guantanamo Bay for decades and used Guantanamo Bay as a torture chamber with people that have no chance of seeing a court date. That's not freedom, that's not democracy. Um, the United States holds twenty-five percent of the whole entire world's prisons. The United States holds 25% of the whole entire world's prison population. That's not freedom. The NSA spies on all of our phones and tracks us against our consent, that's not freedom. The United States itself has been occupying 573 indigenous First Nations governments for 240 years, including the ongoing occupation of the Weot Nation, of which Humboldt County is a colonization and occupation, no different from Afghanistan, or my island of Guam, or Guahan. The people of Guam have no right to vote, people of Guam have no representatives. The United States uses that island as a military base. Joe Biden just put $27 million worth of missiles pointed at China on that base, making my family a target. So to think that while the United States tortures people in this black side of Guantanamo Bay and uses that to funnel money for violent uprising against a country that they have just utterly choked and starved for 60 years, it's utterly preposterous to say that the United States is there to support freedom and democracy. You need to look at your own occupation of the Weot Nation. This is their land, they've been here for thousands of years before the United States did the exact same thing that they did to Hawaii, did the exact same thing that they did to Guam. All of your land here that you stole, you erased the history of all the indigenous peoples, you renamed places McKinleyville, where that president murdered 1.2 million people, of every man above the age of 10. You named these towns Trinidad, after the occupation of the Virgin Islands, Samoa, Manila. You need to take a look at your historical context in which you're operating, where you are the oppressor continuing to bomb the Middle East, continuing 57 different US interventions in South American countries. You are not a liberator, you are an occupier, and you have no business continuing the death and destruction that these sanctions have brought upon the Cuban people. So you need to look at who's putting up these different resolutions, these Trump supporters, people that have coddled the KKK, these three percenters, these white nationalist militias that are rising up around you.
Okay. You've gotten your three minutes, so I appreciate the comment, and we're going to move on to the next comment, I gotta be fair to everybody. So last commenter, I think, unless, you gotta jump in now, folks, if you're going to really do this, because we really need to keep the, we've got a lot of stuff on our agenda today. This is commenter two four three six. Please unmute yourself and express your views. Thanks. Let's see, we haven't, you gotta unmute yourself. There you go, you're on.
Okay, yeah, I pretty much totally agree with everything that Yama, the previous caller said, so I'll keep it quick. And, you know, we're here and we're talking about self-determination, but the resolution before us is an attack on Cuba's sovereignty. Cubans don't need, they don't want US intervention, meaning that they need liberty from the economic tyranny of the United States. And we are here, we are calling in today on Weot land, where people are being denied healthcare, housing, and food, and we're imperializing the country that the United States and members of the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors apparently see as our frontier. And this imperialism is an attack on sovereignty everywhere. And that's another reason why it is relevant here, like Yama said. And if we want to support Cuban access, we need to call out the economic strangling of Cuba. And this red-care mentality, it seems like it's really gaining the way of seeing what the actual threats to freedom, real freedom, are in Cuba. So I would call on the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors to uphold sovereignty. I would call on you to withdraw the full resolution, but regardless, I would encourage the Board of Supervisors to instead write a resolution that unwaveringly upholds Cuban's right to self-determination and primarily recognizing the way that America's illegal economic warfare has prevented that right, but mostly recognizing our American exceptionalism and the problems that we have here first.
Okay, great, thank you so much for those comments. I don't see any other hands up, so I'm going to close public comment at this time and bring it back to the board. Do we have any hands up from the board before we button this up? Okay, I'll jump in. Oh, there you go, Rex, you're up.
Well, I was, I was just gonna say, I was willing to tone it down, but I'll just stand by the way it is. I just, I don't know what our oppression, I sometimes worry about our perceived profession. This was nowhere anyway supposed to be a bash on the USA, Humboldt County, and the work we are doing. But I, I know that Cuba has allied with China and Russia, which has a total population of about 1.6 billion people, and I can't believe they can't, their little island can't get enough support from the most populous country in the world and the largest country in the world. But today it became, it's all USA's fault, and I, and that's great, I love opinions, I'm glad we had this talk today about this, but, and I appreciate everybody's concerns. But I'll just, I'll just sit with the resolution, I was willing to tone it down, I don't know if that would change anything, so I, I appreciate giving everybody an opportunity to go after who they needed to go after today.
Great, thank you, Rex. Anybody else, any other supervisors have an opinion on this? All right, so I'll give mine. I don't support this resolution, but I want to say clearly, I do support democratic and economic reforms in Cuba. I support democratic and economic reforms in the United States. I support democratic and economic reforms in nations across the world that need it, and I think that that's reasonable. I did, when I looked at this particular resolution and the language and where it was supported, really this is part of a movement to, to, it's a, you know, it's a public relations campaign for the Republican Party to move forward with, it's primarily the Republican Party to move forward with, and strengthen what some are calling an embargo, what some are calling a blockade. And I have to say, like, those policies do have pretty big impacts on the Cuban people. And so this isn't just about the words that are on this resolution, it's about what the resolution's going to be used for and who uses it, and I'm not, I just, I just don't feel like I really want to have us to be a party to that. Again, I'm going to close with, I support democratic and economic reforms within Cuba as well as the United States and other nations. I just don't see this as a, as a functional vehicle to really help the Cuban people. And they, there is a lot of struggle there, and there are real issues, and it is complex. So with that, I think we're ready to take a vote.
It was pulled from consent, I don't have a motion.
Okay, unless there's a motion, we'll...
I'd make a motion to support, I'll make a motion to support E5.
I don't know where else we can go with this. Supervisor McGron?
Yes, I would make a motion to support removal of the US blockade of Cuba and to support providing increased humanitarian aid to Cuba.
Okay, not on the agenda, but I appreciate that.
I'm just modifying, I'm modifying the resolution that's on the agenda, and I believe we can modify things, it's on the agenda, and I'm just modifying it.
Okay, I appreciate that.
It won't go anywhere, anywhere. I don't, I don't know if we'll get three votes anyway, but, you know, there's my modified, modified motion.
And from my perspective, I mean, and I know Supervisor Bone had proposed maybe making modifications, I just don't think we have the bandwidth to do that at the dais today personally. So I, I'm not, I'm not there with modifications, so I'm not going to support the second, and I don't know what supervisors Bushnell or Bone are into. Okay, so with that, I'm just going to say, this, this is dying without a, without a second in either direction, and Jefferson, Council Billingsley, can we move forward from there, is that okay?
Vice Chair, if there's been no motion with a second, then there would be no action on the side of...
Okay, there's no action on the side of... And we have a time set that was for 10 o'clock. I do believe that we should probably take just a five-minute break to get everybody in the room and prepared for that. So, let's see, so let's, we're going to start it at 10:30, and we're half an hour behind schedule on that, and I apologize to everybody, but let's take just a quick breather on this, and, and we will return at 10:30, and everybody ready to talk about the drought? Okay? Okay, so this item that we have next, time certain, that was not so certain, that we're here at time 10:30. So, this is an update on the local conditions surrounding the drought situation that we have. It says it's being brought from the Sheriff's Department, but I know it's a, it's a multi-departmental effort, and so maybe someone from the Sheriff's Office can start this out, unless you guys have a different plan for that.
Yes, thank you, members of the board, panelists, members of the public. Supervisor Wilson said this is brought to you from the Sheriff's Office, but it's very much a multi-departmental report. So today I'm here with Melissa Martel and Mario Colson from Humboldt County Environmental Health, Jeff Dahl from the Agricultural Commissioners Office, John Ford with Planning and Building, Hank Seaman, Public Works, and Yana Valakovic, UC Cooperative Extension. So over the past several weeks since our last report on July 20th, we've observed some conditions of drought that have proven to be substantial and harmful, both to human health and the natural environment. On July 29th, the US drought monitor was again updated, upgrading the moderate drought intensity rating in Humboldt County's coastal region to a severe rating, and expanding the extreme drought intensity rating throughout the entire Humboldt County interior from north to south. Today's report is going to summarize recent observed instances of drought conditions surrounding in Humboldt County and surrounding communities, as well as provide an update on the scope of work that we discussed in the July 20th meeting regarding local groundwater assessment and the well permitting process. So I'm going to turn it over to Melissa Martel with Environmental Health to discuss current public health impacts.
Good morning, Vice Chair Wilson and members of the board. This year in serious drought conditions represent a public health threat beyond our shortage of local water supply. Recreation health impacts are being reported to the Division of Environmental Health. Drought conditions have caused reduced water levels and warming. Environmental Health has received several reports of harmful algal blooms at some of our popular swimming holes. We received a report from the state of a swimmer becoming ill on the South Fork of the Eel. Recent results for Cook's Valley show elevated antitoxins in algal mats. Results for San Jacinto State Recreation Area in Mendocino County are also high in antitoxins. For the Women's Federation Grove, algal mats' antitoxin results were lower, cyanobacteria was not as prevalent as in the other areas. Environmental Health has posted caution signs at locations from Cook's Valley to Richardson's Grove, and we have caution signs at the Women's Federation Grove due to the suspected illness. Just across the county line in Trinity County, two dogs passed away shortly after being in the Trinity River. Big Lagoon had a recent sample that detected toxins over action levels and is posted at warning, as is the Trinity River. Harmful algal blooms are caused by certain types of cyanobacteria. These bacteria feed off of sunlight, similar to plants. And there are thousands of different types of cyanobacteria. Many are harmless, but some create toxins that are poisonous to people and animals. A bloom of toxin-producing cyanobacteria is called a harmful algal bloom, or we call it HAB for short. The only way to tell if an algal bloom is toxic is through laboratory testing. That's why we recommend to people and animals to avoid the water and shorelines where there is visible algal growth. Algae and cyanobacteria are naturally occurring, and they're always present in surface water. In rivers, they grow on the rocky bottom, and in stillwaters like our lagoons, it is usually free-floating in the water. They only become a health risk when conditions cause rapid increase in population or a bloom. Blooms happen when a combination of nutrients, sunlight, and temperature are just right for rapid growth. Usually this happens in late summer, early fall, when water levels are low and the water temperature is warm. This year, we received about half of our usual rain, and our rivers are running lower, much lower earlier in the summer. Lower water levels and flow lets the warm water, heats the warm water up at shallower water levels and lets the sunlight to the river bottom where the algae grows, causing conditions for early blooms. The Mad River saw the first bloom this year, and we suspect that the runoff from the areas burned around Ruth Lake increased the amount of nutrients in the river, and that contributed to the early algae growth. So Environmental Health is the local agency that monitors our rivers and samples the algal blooms to see if they're harmful. We work closely with the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board, who instructs us on sample locations or posting impacted recreation areas. They provide the county with the resources and handle the costs for laboratory analysis. We post the signs ranging from caution to danger, depending on testing results and observations. Right now, we have posted signs along the Trinity, in the Willow Creek area, and the South Fork of the Eel at our popular swimming holes. The county, the state, and Trinity County have issued press releases this year to caution the public because there is little we can do to prevent HAB. The drought conditions are becoming increasingly severe. We expect that the seasonal wells are going to go dry earlier this year, and as this drought continues, some wells may become permanently impacted by drought. We are asking the public to report dry wells to the State Department of Water Resources. They can do that via our DEH website or directly to the DWR. If help is needed in completing any online form, our staff is happy to assist. With each report, we get a better understanding of our groundwater environment for our county. Access to potable water is a fundamental public health right, and this data helps to ensure the sustainability of water as a vital resource. The public can search for Humboldt County Environmental Health to find our webpage, and then there's a clickable link for dry well reporting. Thank you, and I think John Ford, Director of Planning and Building, will next discuss the scope of work for the well permitting process.
Thank you, Ms. Martel. John Ford with the Planning and Building Department. At the last meeting on July 22nd, the task force presented that some standards were necessary, really, to get a good regulatory scheme for permitting of wells. It is complicated in Humboldt County, given the various different types of groundwater that exists. And so we have undertaken discussions with the hydrogeologists to help us start to address that. We've come up with a three-phase program so far. The first phase is to really focus in on how do we address the existing well permits that are currently pending, making sure that we adequately address the concerns to existing wells and protection of the groundwater resource as those get approved. The second phase will be to conduct a short-term paper analysis of all existing permitted wells to identify locations, identify depths, see if we can... see if we can get a good handle on where wells are and where they're drawing water from. What that will allow us to do is to develop a good understanding, first, of where wells are and where they're drawing, but also it'll raise questions about what is it that we don't know? What do we need to know in order to develop regulations to allow a good permitting regime for groundwater wells? And then longer term would be to conduct the studies necessary to answer the questions that are raised as part of Phase Two. And, and from that, develop a set of regulations that address the particular constraints associated with permitting of wells. Unfortunately, it is a bit of an iterative process. It's going to be information factually driven. I can't sit here from this day and look forward to understand exactly what the regulations will look like because Humboldt County is so varied. So it is very much a work in progress. We anticipate having a scope to work on the first two phases within the next week. And I'm going to turn it back to Ryan Derby now.
Thank you, Director Ford. In addition to the previously mentioned public health impacts of drought, I just briefly want to touch on some observed water diversion, water theft issues that the Sheriff's Office has witnessed recently. So recently, the Hope County Sheriff's Office Marijuana Enforcement Team served 23 warrants to investigate illegal cannabis cultivation in four of Humboldt County's watersheds. The investigation found that in the Redwood Creek, Steelhead Powers Creek, Salmon Creek, and Roach Tully Creek watersheds, the water flow is being impacted by illegal stream diversion and water theft. These watersheds are of particular concern because they're home to protected species of Coho, Chinook salmon, as well as steelhead trout, all of which are faced with some pretty tremendous habitat challenges due to the drought conditions countywide. Water conditions and water theft, as they relate to marijuana cultivation sites, have been witnessed to be widespread in these investigations and harmful, both to the local ecosystem and to the fish populations. This practice of diverting water for these purposes, or any purposes really, is contributing to already stressed water systems by fragmenting local fish habitat, adding additional sediment debris to creeks, streams, and rivers in those areas, and contributing to reduce water availability in some situations. This is a particularly difficult issue to tackle. It's, it's difficult to enforce. But with the Marijuana Enforcement Team serving up warrants, that's really the best way to combat illegal water diversion for illegal marijuana cultivation. They've taken numerous pictures, which we've provided in the attachment to today's agenda item. For the sake of time, I think I'll just leave that in the attachment and let the photos speak for themselves rather than sharing them in today's screen, unless the board wouldn't like to see those come up today. And that, that's really my update on the water diversion. But I do briefly want to touch on what's going on with wildfire recently, if that's appropriate. I know it's not directly tied to drought, but it's been on a lot of people's minds and has some, some pretty strong drought implications. So the biggest fire of concern right now that my office is monitoring is the Monument Fire in Trinity County. It's currently just over 59, or sorry, 57,000 acres, which has left 299 closed. And there's another fire south of that in Trinity County that has closed Highway 36 as well. So those two fires have left Highway 101 as the only reliable transportation lifeline in Humboldt County at this time, which many of us are aware is experiencing some routine closures over the last chance to create a portion of the highway. So in short, Humboldt County is effectively islanded transportation-wise. As I stated, the Monument Fire is at 57,000 acres and is currently at 3% containment. It's expanding on all sides of the fire daily, with primary growth happening on the eastern border of the fire towards Junction City. And even though this is in the Humboldt County incident, we are starting to see some evacuees that are fleeing west into Humboldt County, many of whom are evacuating with their animals, which presents some challenges for us at the county level. But we're fortunate to have a really good group of volunteers that have been assisting with finding temporary shelter for both humans and their animals. And we're also expecting to see some really dry, extreme heat in much of the eastern portion of the county this week with some increased potential for fire starts. So the reason I'm presenting all of this today is because it's clear that we're well in fire season. And I know that we've talked about fire as an impact of drought, and it's, it's here. So now is the time for people who haven't registered for Humboldt Alert to visit our website, HumboldtAlert, or sorry, humbledgov.org/alerts and register for our mass notification system. And also, in partnership with Planning and Building Department and Agricultural Commissioners Office, we recently launched a restricted access pass program to allow traditional agricultural producers, the licensed commercial cannabis operators, to access their properties during evacuation orders. So this is an application that can be found at our OES website. It's really simple to go through. It's all tied in with our county GIS platform, and then has some individual review from county staff. But that will help prevent some agricultural loss and help sustain some, some lifelines for people if they're evacuated duty fired. So with that, just want to conclude by saying that the impacts of drought are widespread and they're mounting. And I feel, and this task force feels, that it's essential for us to continue our information collection, continue these impact studies, and continue along that scope of work. And in our staff report today, we've asked for permission to expand, or expand the task force that the task force will to bring in some additional stakeholders if needed, just so we can broaden our reach and broaden our understanding of what the local impacts are, so we can continue to bring back some recommendations for mitigation and response actions, as well as potential policy direction. And that concludes our brief report today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All the directors and staff that put that in. So I'm going to start this with questions from board members. So I see a hand up from Supervisor Bushnell, so I'll let you jump in here.
Thank you. Through the chair, I have two questions. First one is for Ryan. So you had said Humboldt County is islanded, and I'm wondering if you can clarify, is Highway 3 closed, 36 to Hayfork to 299? And also, the opportunity to go down to Highway 20 and up 101 is still available, correct?
That is correct. When we look at our, our main lifelines for the county, we're primarily looking at Highway 36, 299, and 101. So there are still open modes of travel along those other routes, but it is causing some, some delays. So if you're coming from 299 where it might take you an hour, you're having to route around, it'll take you about four hours to get into the county.
I'm aware of that. I just don't want to panic people thinking there's no way out or in.
I appreciate the clarification.
Yep, and then my next question is for Director Ford. I have two questions. So you said part of the focus for the wells was to find out where the wells are located. And is that, isn't that already done through the well, the application with environmental health? When you submit an application, you have to do exactly where it's at? And I think it's longitude, latitude, and area? So is that something, we already currently have that information?
Yes, we have the information. It's really a matter of taking that information and putting it into one common source and analyzing the depths of the wells and locations of the wells to see what water source is really being extracted from. And, and so it is information we have. We've just never pulled it together to see what data it provides us.
Okay, so just, just working more with the well permits then?
Correct.
Okay, and then my second question is with, are we going to put domestic and agricultural all in the same? Or are we going to, is that going to be different categories? How are we do, how are we thinking about that?
At this point, we've not made any distinction between those. We have talked about not distinguishing and not focusing on one group at the expense of the others. But it really will depend on where the information takes us, what the, the facts show in terms of how different wells should be addressed. Ag wells should all be treated as ag wells, domestic wells should be treated as domestic wells, and how those are permitted and the regulations that apply to those will come out of the studies that we're going to do.
Okay, and then lastly, I wanted to ask Jeff, if he, do you have anything to add to what Ryan had already reported?
Thank you, Supervisor Bushnell. I would add that my conversations with agricultural producers are, you know, revealing to me that conditions for agriculture are worsening. As I reported to your board during our last report on the 27th of July, there is program assistance for those producers who are suffering losses through the Farm Service Agency. There's a couple of different programs. So if any members of the public are impacted and they are agricultural producers, certainly I would recommend that they reach out to the Farm Service Agency. Something else I'm trying to get a better understanding of is the offering of the Environmental Quality Incentive Program through the NRCS. And my initial discussions with the Natural Resource Conservation Department head seem to indicate that there may be funding available, but due to the timing of that funding, really the benefits of the work that they will be able to assist producers with will not be forthcoming until next year. But I'm still, you know, trying to get a better understanding of how the federal funding works. And it's my intention to give your board a little bit more detailed update on that when I actually have a better understanding and can explain it to you in a cogent manner.
Thank you, Jeff. I really appreciate that. And then I have one last question, Supervisor Wilson, thank you. This question is for Mario. Hi, Mario. I am wondering, at what rate are well permits coming in right now? And how many are you guys processing?
We're getting, I want to say, four to six well permits a week. We probably have a backlog of about 30 to 40. So we're working on a new strategy to issue permits and working with John Ford. And we had a meeting with the drillers to, to collaborate and go ahead with trying to, trying to get these things out.
So is it common to have a backlog of 30 to 40?
No, I think that, that is an artifact of what the legislative environment has, has produced. So in August of 2020, there was really a precedent-setting court case that the Supreme Court decided in the power versus county of Stanislaus decision that well permits are subject to CEQA. And that's really slowed our review down. And we need to ensure that we comply with CEQA considerations.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great, thanks for that. Supervisor Bone, I think your hand is up next.
Yeah, and I think Mario answered 95% of them. I think the only thing that didn't get answered, are we, are we issuing any permits?
Yeah, thanks Supervisor Bone. We are issuing permits and not as fast, but how we described, there is a difference in domestic versus agricultural applications. So domestic uses are largely easier to permit. The agricultural or discretionary permits are more challenging.
All right, and then, and for John Ford, and this may be Mario too, the scope of work for well permitting, I noticed that there's a, the assistance of technical experts or hydrogeologists. And I know we've had this discussion because some people think they're all of that, and we're finding out they're not. So I'm just trying to figure out who are technical experts? And, and what would we, what would you consider a well driller with 40 years' experience, a technical expert, or would he just be just that, a technical expert?
I'll take a shot at that. Mario, if you want to jump in, please do. I, I think that there's a lot of value in talking to well drillers. There are some particularly informed well drillers that can give a lot of information. The information they provide, in all honesty, when we get into a public hearing setting, sometimes gets questioned because they don't have credentials. But that doesn't mean that the information they provide isn't, isn't accurate. So the approach that we're, we're working on doing right now in developing the scope of work and moving forward is working with the hydrogeologist to make sure that whatever we bring back in front of the board ultimately is, is something that can be accepted by the greater community who's often concerned about the information that's being provided.
Thank you.
All right, so Supervisor Madron, I think I see your hand up next.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Yeah, nice presentation. A question for Melissa, you know, on the, the algal bloom issues and people or dogs dying, et cetera. You know, when you go out to the rivers, there's clearly places where there's slow-flowing water or eddies, and you get a high concentration of algae. And clearly, those areas you need to stay clear of. You don't know for sure if that's, you know, the toxic stuff or not, but those are the places to stay clear of. You know, when you go out to the Trinity River, there's certainly algae on the bottom, and there are slow-moving places where it exists. But mostly, the river is moving pretty quickly. And, and I'm just guessing that dilution must make a lot of the sections okay. I know that's a risk that people take, but I get a lot of questions. People are wanting, can we go swimming at all? Can we go to any of the rivers at all? And I've been going to the Matol and the Trinity River over the last few weeks. And there certainly are places I would avoid, but there are a lot of other areas where the water seems very clean and clear, moving swiftly. And I don't hear about people getting sick or dying from swimming in those kinds of areas. Clearly, ingesting the water, you know, little kids, dogs tend to ingest a lot more water than adults. So there's a lot of concern there if you take your dog to the river, making sure that they're not getting into these bad places, et cetera. But what, what's your thoughts on that is? I mean, because if it's in one place, it must be kind of everywhere, but very diluted in certain sections of the river, I guess, is the way of putting it.
Thank you, Supervisor Madron. Yes, we love our rivers, and it's a shame so early in the year to have to stop swimming. And I agree that the higher the river and the colder the river, the better the chance of that it's safe to swim in. And again, just use caution when you observe the algal mats, you know, near the shoreline or free-floating. That's what you want to avoid. And especially in the stagnant areas where it's warmed up by the sunlight and the shallowness or the low levels of river, that's, that's what you want to avoid. So it's more of take precautions when you see it. But yeah, there's still swimmable areas in our rivers. And I've been to the Smith River, the South Fork of the Smith. It's still cold and, not as cold as normal, but cold and running well. And there's no algal blooms there that I, that I saw. So there are still safe places to swim, yes.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting. In normal years, the Matol will get much warmer than the Trinity. But about a week and a half ago, before the releases, they just had a bunch of releases last week on the Trinity River that brought the, doubled the flow. And I'm sure that that cooled the water a bit. But the Trinity a week and a half ago was so warm, I mean, you could just walk right in, literally. It must have been in the low 70s or something. Whereas the Matol was still running in the high 60s. And it was just kind of phenomenal to me to see those differences. high 60s, and it was just kind of phenomenal to me to see those differences. And I think part of it is the Matol, you know, the upper part of the Matol can get up to 90s, even approach 100, but more often, the majority of the watershed's in the 70s and 80s, whereas out on the Trinity, we've been seeing 100-degree temps over and over again for weeks. So I'm guessing that's a big part of what heated up the Trinity. But anyway, thank you for that clarification. Be safe, be careful, only really go into those safe and clean places. And yes, our Smith River, one of the cleanest and coolest in the state, wonderful place. Couple of other points, you know, I appreciate that the Ruth Reservoir is still, what, 80, 80-some percent full, and I think it's something like 85% of Humboldt County's residents get their water from the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District out of the Mad River. So in terms of water availability, water quantity, 85% of our population's in a pretty good place with with that. But over, I don't know, 70-some percent of the county area does not get its water from that Mad River system, certainly not population-wise, but area-wise, the vast majority of the county gets its water from wells, springs, creek diversions, et cetera. And we are experiencing, as you know, all of you, wells are drying out, springs are drying out, creeks are drying out. And so, you know, I just wanted to say that I think that with the ARPA funds that are coming up later, and I won't get into it too much right now, one of the categories is to help with water and sewer system resiliencies and things like that. And I do think that there is a great opportunity here to use some of those funds and other grant monies out there to further incentivize putting in rainwater collection and storage facilities at the individual home level, neighborhood level, et cetera. It won't solve our problems today, but the sooner we get these things installed all over our communities, the more resilient we'll be for those that in particular aren't on the Mad River water supply, right? So I just wanted to make a pitch for that as part of our drought planning. Often when you're in these kinds of emergencies, the things you do right now may not change the current emergency, but it certainly will help us in future conditions like this. So I want to really speak strongly to that. And then lastly, I appreciate the cannabis, the illegal cannabis enforcement. Those pictures are pretty telling, those are some pretty egregious activities going on, and I very much appreciate the work of the county in trying to get a handle on all of those kinds of things. It's still a little bit of a conundrum in regards to legal cannabis and curtailment that's included in the EIR as one of the measures to mitigate for things like this, and we're still not really implementing anything, so I'm a little bit concerned about that. We haven't talked too much about that, but appreciate the drought task force and the work you're doing, and hope that we can start actually implementing some measures to help us get through the next one, because this isn't probably the last dry year. Thank you.
Supervisor Madron, Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I wanted to ask Director Ford, with what Mario said with the ag wells and domestic wells, the process for the application being different, is it something we should consider looking at those different and separating them?
You're talking about a different process for ag wells versus cannabis ag wells?
No, I think ag wells are ag wells, domestic wells and ag wells.
Okay, no, thanks. I was trying to clarify that, I wasn't sure what you were asking. But if if the question is, is there a difference between ag wells and domestic wells, typically there are. They typically would have different requirements, different proofs to demonstrate that they won't have an adverse effect upon the resource.
So are we, with through this task force, are we identifying the research on wells in general, all wells, or my question is, are we looking at domestic wells separate through this task force and ag wells separate, or are we clumping them all together?
So right now, we're looking at wells in aggregate, and and then we will be looking and seeing where the facts lead us. And if the, say, the decision is to require a permitting regime for domestic wells, those would have a set of criteria that would be used to approve those wells, and ag wells would have a different set of criteria.
Okay, thank you. And then I just wanted to also say with Supervisor Madron's comment about the curtailment of cannabis, while I know that it is part of the, I guess it's the EIR, is that correct, Director Ford?
It was addressed as in the EIR, and it is part of the ordinance, that is true, for 2.0, right?
Okay, I guess I, I do understand that it is part of the ordinance and it's part of the EIR. It's my, when I first think about it, though, I want to recognize that when you do curtailment for agricultural cannabis, and you're not doing curtailment for any other agricultural commodity, I think we better, we need to look at that, and we need to look at the fairness of of that. And I know that, you know, although it states it in the ordinance, agriculture is agricultural. I know some people don't agree, it's all the same, but when it comes to water use, it is all the same. And I just hope that we're looking at the big picture and not targeting certain entities or industries.
If if I could add a thought on to that?
Sure.
Is is that there is a subtle perceptual issue here too, which is that, as Mr. Derby pointed out, there is that illegal portion of the industry that's out there, and they wouldn't be subject to curtailment. And so to put regulations on people and then require them to curtail, and there's taxation issues involved there, and then the illegal industry gets a pass, that that sends a very wrong message.
I, yes, thank you for saying that. You and I have spoke of that, and so thank you for adding that.
Are there any more comments from the board? I have a couple as well. So I, I do want to address this idea that there, or that there is five or six or seven well permits per week coming in with a 30 backlog, and this around, in the community, and we get emails from folks saying, hey, we're in a drought, we should, why are we issuing more well permits? And so when you, and I think Mario brought it up that there, that these are subject to SEQA, can you just outline what, when a well permits coming in, what is being analyzed before approval that, you know, SEQA is taken into consideration?
Thanks Supervisor Wilson. When we get an application for a well permit, the first step is to recognize what it's serving, what is the application for, is it a domestic well, or is it a well that's proposed to serve a discretionary project? Domestic wells can qualify for some exemptions from SEQA. A replacement well for an existing family is a priority. We don't want families to go without water. That's, that's a fundamental necessity for families in our public health concerns. So we do usher those through as best as we can. Discretionary projects, we're looking for the project description from the planning project to identify the proposed well. And when the planning project identifies the proposed well, it should be with the proper associated assessor partial number, so that the decision-making authority has all the facts to make the appropriate decision. And if if those are incorporated, then our well permit with environmental health has the ability to approve the permit in compliance with SEQA. There are very few, if if any, that don't have a larger project associated with the well permit. So we haven't yet been required to request an initial study or other environmental documents beyond just the well permit. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, it did. I, I will say that that the progress being made by the planning department under Director Ford in terms of like updating this process of evaluating, and and I, and I don't think, I don't think I'm interpreting this, I might just be interpreting this differently, but I mean, wells used for different things really have different impacts, just by location and consumption of how much is being pulled out of the, out of the environment. And so, again, it's like where the well exists in the watershed, its proximity to a creek, its proximity to what, whatever, and then the use, whether it's domestic use or agricultural use. And I will say that not all agricultural uses are necessarily the same in terms of volume, and so that, and and there may have to be, even within agriculture, at some point there may have to be some prioritization. As a community, we may have to ask ourselves what that is, and I'm not saying we do that today, but I, I don't, I don't think it's going to be a long ways off. We're seeing it happening in a lot of places, you know, and it's just when, when water doesn't exist, oftentimes agricultural activities adapt to that, have to have to deal with that, and so we're going to have, probably going to see some of that. But with the water theft part of this, I, you know, there's folks, where some of us are receiving some emails, relationship, hey, I saw this truck over here pulling from this place over here and that over there. And this, I guess, goes to the, to our enforcement arm here. Are we seeing enforcement on illegal water draws in terms of, what are we seeing with that? Because I'm just kind of wondering, what kind of monitoring and what kind of enforcement are we actually having on the ground?
Oh, that's a really difficult one, because it's not illegal to truck water. It is illegal to use trucked water on a cannabis farm. It's not illegal to use trucked water for domestic purposes. It's not illegal to use trucked water for other agricultural uses. Obviously, pulling water out of a creek, if somebody's caught doing that, a creek or a river, that would be an actionable offense. But in all honesty, we we know that it's an issue, we're trying to get our hands around how best to address that. We have discussed the possibility of and have not presented this to the board yet. And so I say this with some trepidation, but we have discussed trying to figure out a way to require some reporting of of water hauling, so that people would identify their water source and that where they're delivering it to. Then have to be a complicated process, it's mostly just for accountability. And, but we recognize that that too will be extremely unpopular.
Well, I mean, unpopular to water haulers. It may not be unpopular to the population, people who are concerned about the issue of illegal water hauling. And so we've talked about this in terms of like even back when we had issues with diesel spills and asking, you know, diesel delivery trucks to be potentially responsible for where they deliver and to make sure that they're delivering to places that are safe. And there are counties that do that, we are not the, we don't do it necessarily, but there are places that do do that. And I think it's, you know, it's not unreasonable conversation to have. And and I think having some responsibilities on the, on the folks that are delivering, about where they get their water, because again, what I'm having, I'm hearing from folks is, oh, this person's pulling water from their domestic well and then delivering it using the truck, right? And we know that's not appropriate. And so, I mean, I guess what I'm hearing from you is we haven't had, we've just had reports of people doing this, but we haven't had any necessarily, any citations written or anything like that for this, at least for this season. Is that the case?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's still kind of hanging out there, it seems like. And then on the issue with relationship to the professional opinion of a well driller, I want to say like that that it is, it all depends on, I think you're right, it's like the litigation element of whether or not, especially on appeal, the person's ability to, whether or not the, their opinion is true or not. The question is whether or not there's a professional stamp associated with that, and whether or not there's professional liability insurance associated with that, I think is part of what that is why there's that issue and that discussion in there. It's not, it's not, you can have a correct opinion and based on fact and those sorts of things, but under a litigate, litigious situation, it's not, it's not as meaningful. I just, it just, and so it's just kind of why we have these professional codes and all those other things, it's just part of what we have to deal with. It doesn't mean it's it's bad opinion, it just means that in some place, there's a, there's a threshold. And then I just want to also, with regards to Ruth Lake and and Supervisor Madron, you know, talk, mentioning about that we do have this delivery of water that comes to about 80%, I think, of our population, maybe something less than 70% of our population is delivered domestically from Ruth Lake, which is doing pretty well. The river itself is a pipeline, so it's part of why there is river in the water is through that, through that delivery of that resource. There is discussions, and I think we need to really, I think the county needs to support the district in in looking at the allocation of water from Ruth Lake for environmental and ecological purposes. I think that's important. But also just as a reminder to folks that even if the water is high in Ruth Lake and you feel like you get every drop we use and gallon we use from that resource has to be pumped, has to be treated, has to be, if you're not watering on your garden and it goes into your sewer, has to be treated again. So there is an energy and and carbon footprint to using that water, and so anything we can do to reduce our water usage domestically would be great. That's what I have for comments. I saw Supervisor Bushnell, no, she's not going to jump in, so I'm going to move to public comment and public, and I'm hoping that if there are questions from the public that the staff has the ability to write those down and answer them to the best of their abilities. And so, hold on, I got to change my view in order to, in order to see that. Hold on one second. All right, I see. All right, so if there are attend, if there are people from the, folks from the public who want to comment or have questions on this item, please raise your hand now, and I will get you right now. I don't see anybody with a hand up, and maybe if Tracy, could you just confirm what I'm seeing here? Oh, I see one, I got one.
Just real quick, Chair, your volume is slowly decreasing, so I'm not sure if you need to up your volume or dress your mic. Thank you.
This mic is dressed, and I will, I'll do my best here to, I'll just speak a little louder, a little closer, move it on in, because I don't know, it's just an old computer. So here we go. I'll, I'll just, I didn't even know where the microphone is on this thing. Moving on here, I have one comment or commenter so far, I have, now I have a couple. So I have Emily, and Emily, if you can unmute yourself, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I just want to know how the public can become more involved in this and where a repository of information might be pertaining to this and how I can become up to date, because this is very disturbing. Thank you.
Good, thank you for that. Good question, and we'll see what we can do to address that. Okay, so the next public commenter is 7454. Please unmute yourself and join the conversation.
Ken Swatzky here, and I'm going to make a disclosure here regarding water. I'm in the process of building tombstones. What I want to be remembered for is doing the best I can to keep all the water in the Mad River, put all the water back in the Trinity River, and all the water back in the eel. I do feel I have a dog in this fight, we all should have a dog in this fight. On my tombstone, it's been recommended that it be made out of wood, probably a piece of Madron wood, and it's And it says he got his three minutes. So I'm taking my three minutes here. You're talking about a drought. This is not a drought. This is the new normal. We may have more rain sometimes, but this will be your new normal. That's what everybody's predicting. I'm gonna go with that one. It makes sense to me. Regarding your wells, and I'm I'm not going to differentiate between cannabis and and other agricultural uses, but I would, I asked that you ask your staff, John Ford, if he thinks it's appropriate to go ahead and prioritize this in the following manner. That basically the domestic water takes precedent over agricultural use. That let's say you have somebody with senior water rights. Or some, let's say no new wells unless they're to deal with one that has failed. So let's say you have a farmer who's had a well for a hundred years and that well failed and he needs to put in a new well and get a permit for that to replace that well to go down a little more or develop a little further. I can understand that being a priority number one, same with a a residential use. I'm extremely concerned about the lack of enforcement by the county. I was involved, called Cliff Johnson. I've spoken to Director Ford regarding a permitted grow, two of them up in the Maple Creek area that was reported to me that they were, they were, they were putting straws in the water without permission. I was told by Mr. Johnson that he he followed through on that. He basically checked to see they're not, they're not permitted to grow this year yet. That has nothing to do with it. And then I was told he went ahead and reached out to the applicant. Well, this was a, this was a complaint that shouldn't have gone to the applicant before investigation. I don't think anybody who's incompetent that should even be doing anything to do with the county planning and building process. And I'm gonna ask that that maybe you can follow, this is also called in the hotline allegedly, nothing's happening. And so I'm I'm very distressed regarding this particular topic. And of course, you are prone to litigation. Well, drillers are not qualified to do this. I witched a well site and I think the well driller you're using told them he could drill, had to, he could drill five feet off that. They blew dust for two hundred feet and then did an alternative method. And and of course, that water was down at twenty feet. I know where it was. I witched it. So you you have to have an expert, I highly recommend you get an out of the area expert because a local expert may be doing the same permitting you're required for the people that they're going oversight. So rather than using a local geological hydrologist, go out of the area, get somebody without any kind of conflict of interest. Bring in an expert in here and work with that person as quick as you can. You're so far behind the eight ball here. It's unbelievable. Highly recommend you spend that next meeting, you may counsel dealing with this particular topic.
Thank you for that and just went a little beyond three minutes. So next commenter or person from the public is ending in seven one zero eight, seven one zero eight. Unmute yourself and let's hear what you have to say. We can hear you now. Hey Bonnie, could you turn up a little bit?
Yeah, is this better?
That is much better. Thank you.
Okay. I sent in written comments, hopefully everybody saw. One thing that's different from what I sent in when I was talking about the seven cannabis permits that were on the planning commission agenda that we're planning on taking out one million four hundred eighty seven thousand six hundred gallons of water from wells for their cannabis operations. And I had sent they were categorized in area of severe drought. Well, now that's been moved to extreme. I'm really glad that the planning department's gonna compile the information so that they'll have a better idea of how much water, not just the location, but how much water is being pumped out of those wells. Because they just keep permitting them in places where there's it's in extreme drought. And the, as far as the cannabis and agriculture, the biggest issue is location, 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 location. And if you're down in the Eel River Valley, then that's a whole different situation. And we've got all these watersheds and uplands that are very different. And I don't think the county really knows, you know, what's going on. And I would suggest some kind of a moratorium to until you find out where you are now, instead of just keep going down this road and you'll find out later. So that's my big concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bonnie. All right. So I'm looking, I don't see anyone else from the public, Tracy, or you see anything there? All right, I'm gonna close public comment right now. And we're gonna move on to it looks like Supervisor Bone has his hand up. So Supervisor Bone.
Whereas I respect public comment and I'm always glad to hear it, even if it's against me or anything else. Again, I will not stand for our staff to be attacked. I've worked with Cliff Johnson for five, six, seven years. I mean, he worked tirelessly to get the shaded parcels taken care of. He answers everything. As soon as you ask him, he works with, I get more compliments on Cliff than I probably do anybody. And so I just want to let people know that Cliff is probably one of the the leaders over there at planning and building and I appreciate everything he does and senseless name calling by people on the dais is if it's not one of us elected, is uncalled for. And I know they can do it, but I don't have to stand for it. Thank you. And thanks, Cliff, for all your work.
Thank you, Rex. Staff definitely appreciates those words of support. Supervisor Bushnell, you have your hand up now.
Um, thank you. I echo what Supervisor Bone just said, that it's it needs to stop. But my question is for you, Supervisor Wilson, earlier you were talking about delivery of diesel and delivery of water and monitoring those things. And I'm wondering unless it's a, what would be the basis behind it?
Oh, well, the basis behind it is that we're having problems with, well, diesel we had in the past for sure, where their delivery of diesel to leaky tanks and those kinds of things and trying to figure out ways to keep that from happening. And when people are doing deliveries that they know are too unsafe conditions or in the cases of water where they know that they're delivering water illegally, then we, that's, that's why we monitor all kinds of businesses. I mean
But you would be assuming that every delivery is illegal and every source is bad. And I was just wanting to clarify.
I would disagree with that. We have lots of regulations that do not assume that every activity is illegal. We regulate gas stations and we regulate we just regulate all kinds of things. We have laws associated with everything that that we don't assume that everyone's doing things that are legal, but when we have, we reach a threshold where there needs to be some monitoring of activities because unmonitored, they have environmental impacts or safety impacts, then we, then we do that. And it's a reasonable conversation to have. I'm not today advancing the idea that we're gonna be doing that today, but I, I think it's something we should definitely put it on the list of considerations. That's just me.
Yeah, thank you for clarification.
Yeah. Let's see here. I, and with that, actually, I do have a question about, we in back to wells and, you know, the discussion that there's, you know, there's been some people have been asking about moratoriums on on new wells. Is there somewhere between, and this is a question for Director Ford, is there somewhere between a like a, just a straight up moratorium on wells? Or is, or could there be a moratorium on wells that don't have forbearance, for instance? And and could we, and that would even mean domestic wells and that would even, you know, just like any new well in certain areas like within impacted watersheds would require forbearance. You know, no matter what, is that something, is that a concept that that, you know, I'm just trying to figure out, is there is there something that we should be considering or adding to maybe that checklist of well applications that that is something less than than a moratorium, but something more than what is the status quo?
I I think it's something that we can definitely look at. That's part of what the first phase is, is that how do we, we deal with the well permits that we have and protect, again, protect the resource for this year to require a well owner, well operator, well user to comply with forbearance. If they haven't, if they haven't already for, you know, set water aside, that is a de facto cease and desist of an existing well. And and so we want to be a little careful there. If we're gonna permit new wells and going and they're gonna get dug this year and that allows people to understand that in order to use the well during the dry season next year, they need to forbear. If that's advantageous, that gives them the opportunity to put in storage this winter, pump the water storage going into the next dry season. That's something we can definitely look at.
So I mean, we could say, I mean, an option would be to say that after a certain date, I mean, it could be even our next meeting, I don't know, you know, any new applications coming in, not applications that have already come in, but any new applications that come in within areas that are considered you know, significant, I guess we we have these watersheds that are impacted watersheds that have been identified. It seems to me that if we have an impacted watershed, it's been identified, it's in any well, domestic or or otherwise being proposed should provide forbearance. I mean, I think we're, we're past that, we're past that point to to, in my mind and and maybe I'm missing something here, but this maybe should be a conversation with Fish and Game as well, or Fish and Wildlife, excuse me, about about that.
Actually, that's really more of a discussion, I think, with the hydrogeologist. Not to be argumentative, but I'm not convinced that all locations are so connected to surface flow that forbearance has a benefit. I mean, if it's a true repository of water, you have a certain amount of water that goes in, a certain amount of water that infiltrates every year regardless. And if it's not draining into a surface water body, then it doesn't matter when you withdraw the water.
And so maybe this is taken care of, maybe as part of the review in watersheds that are impacted currently, we are requiring a hydrologist to review that. Currently?
We are currently not requiring a hydrogeologist or a geologist to review those, those well logs. We have not gotten to that point. That could be something that we need to do. We have have been
Oh, sorry to interrupt, but just put me on the list for supporting, at least conceptually, the idea of within impacted watersheds that we have some hydrologic review for new well applications. I just, I feel like that seems reasonable to me in those impacted watersheds. That's just I apologize for interrupting.
Nope, that's fine. Got it.
I'm just gonna get stuff off off the tip of my tongue. And was there something more you wanted to add?
No, that totally get it, got it.
Is there anything else from staff or board members on this? Oh, there was actually one item that the staff report had requested of us to, you know, approve you guys moving forward with the actions that you've been talking about in terms of improving regulations and those sorts of things, or basically taking in more data so that we can, you know, move into the next season more informed. There was some discussion about, and I I sure I I brought it up with relationship to water deliveries and how we can address that better. I think it is time that we look at that and just, we're just getting too many people with having a lot of anxiety about water trucks going all over the place and we're just we just seem to have, we just seem to be, are unable to address that. And we, I think we, I think we should find a place and way to do that. But then there was also something on the agenda about adding and us approving the task force adding members. And so I'm wondering if I'm okay with that. Is the, is the idea that the task force would do that independently of the board? Or is that something, did you want, did you guys think you were gonna bring back to the board for some kind of ratification?
Given the fact that the task force is formed and appointed by the board, I I think the preference would be that if if we were to propose an expansion, it'd be something that the board approved.
Okay, I appreciate that. And so I'll be looking for some motions here to on some of these issues. And so Supervisor Bushnell, I see your hand up. Oh, Supervisor Bone, I see your hand up. All right.
Yeah, I, and I just wanted to mention, I I don't know who we're going to get to monitor the water trucks, but since we're in the middle of construction season, which they're required to water, we're in the middle of logging, which they're required to have water trucks. I don't know where we're gonna get this fleet of people to check. And and it's funny. And I I guess you're getting all the calls. I have not gotten one call about an influx of water trucks running up and down the roads. So I mean, literally, I haven't got one. So I I guess they're all going to you. I mean, I I believe it's an issue. I think I know that people are aware that there are some issues out there, but I haven't, I have not seen that. So I, and maybe Ryan, I see his hand went up, maybe he found, he's got a crew that can check water trucks and they're belting on where they pulled it from and where it's going. And then as far as fuel trucks, all the and I don't know, once I've been out of it for a long time, we were always told to not deliver to leaky tanks illegal because, believe it or not, most of fuel companies have put stringent environmental controls on keeping the environment great. So I think they've been pretty good at it. I noticed that a lot of the times it's it's at the source or where they've done the transfer or where they've changed the oil and stuff where a lot of this leakage takes place. So and I mean, I can remember working with Ms. Martell years ago on a flyer for actually cannabis growers when it was illegal about how to have legal tanks, storage, secondary containment and everything else with environmental health. So that's probably been fifteen or twenty years ago when we worked on that. So I think, I think the people doing that business are doing their part. I'm not saying that they're all doing it, not that everybody does everything right, but I I do believe in that. And I just want to know how we will. I mean, we're we're giving a lot of people, we're not asking the people to, who are gonna go out and check this out, how they can do it. They're shorthanded already. So we can take them off the house patrol and things like that, but thanks.
Yeah, and Supervisor Bone, I appreciate that. And I I do want to acknowledge what you're saying was that, you know, we've, you know, fuel delivery has come a long way from that time, way before. I was just using it as an example of, you know, there was kind of a crunch on that and 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 it helped a lot. And there was a good response. And and what I'm saying is that maybe something similar with relationship to water delivery could be done. I don't know what that mechanism is. I don't know whether it's people inspecting things. I don't know if it's just reports being sent in. I don't know what that is, but it seems like there's some anxiety around that. And so it'd be good if maybe we could get some suggestions coming back on that. Ryan, I know you have something to say about this. Thanks.
Yes, thank you Supervisor Wilson. So just on the the note of monitoring or permitting water haulers, I think that ultimately what that would do is keep the honest people honest and the people who are noncompliant will remain noncompliant. So I can see some some value in examining, you know, possible alternatives. But in terms of enforcement, you know, what would we cite them under? Is it prosecuted, you know, is it able to be prosecuted? And I don't think that those are questions that are easily answered and we don't necessarily have a mechanism for it at this point. So I like the idea of, you know, bringing that back to the task force and coming up with a few different options, maybe outside of a monitoring or permitting process. And I do, not to be argumentative, but I do differ from Director Ford on the expansion of the task force idea. With this being an emergency, a local declared emergency, I feel it's important that we do have the ability to expand at the the will of the task forces as issues come up and we identify stakeholders that may be able to present differing opinions. and we identify stakeholders that may be able to present differing opinions or suggestions. Um, so we have two options on the table for the board to consider, um, but that's my two cents on the matter.
And I appreciate that. And, um, if Supervisor Madrone would allow me just to respond to what, um, Brian just said, I mean, it's, there's a difference between folks being on a task force and bringing and presenting information to the task force. And so I would let the task force sort of delineate how they want to, what they would want to do, and I, I, I'm okay. I, I, I believe in our professionals to, to do that. That's just me. I hear from other board members. Supervisor Madrone.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, yeah, um, Ryan, I, uh, absolutely agree with you that you know, there's this real conundrum out there that if, if we don't have enough incentives for people to do the right thing, and there's a lot of people not doing the right thing or doing the wrong thing, enforcement will never, we will never have enough enforcement to deal with that. That's not how those kinds of things get dealt with, right? Uh, and it is also true, it's been said a couple of times here today and at our last update, that, uh, a lot of times these regulations, uh, screw the compliant and the uncompliant carry on, you know, and so we talked about the, the unfairness of how that kind of thing works. In my studying of these kinds of issues, the only way we get compliance is if we have enough incentives, carrots, as we say, in place to encourage people to do the right thing, whether that's storage and forbearance on all wells, uh, or whatever else we might be able to provide, just incentivizing storage, uh, in general is such a great thing to be doing. And the bottom line is if we create enough incentives for people to do the right thing, then ninety, ninety-five percent of the population will do the right thing. And then you can actually use enforcement on that five or ten percent of the population that no matter what incentives you provide to them, they're still going to operate illegally. But you can't use enforcement as a tool on a hundred percent of the population. It's not effective. There'll never be enough bodies to do it. I mean, we can see how that works with enforcement on so many laws we have. It's, you know, the sheriff's department is stretched really thin. They do the best job they can, but it's really hard to, to get enforcement that way. So I, as always, have always been a big proponent of creating incentives. We actually, as a board, did create some incentives in the cannabis, uh, business arena in that several months back, we created some new incentives where you could put in some storage and get some write-offs on that. Uh, I believe it was against your measur-est tax and some other kinds of things. And we haven't really talked very much about those incentives that already got put into place for cannabis farmers in particular. But I really think we need to go way beyond that and look at water storage, not just for cannabis or ag in general, but for everybody. How do we further incentivize rainwater collection, water storage, forbearance, conservation measures? How, how do we do that? And we've got a few tools in place, but I think we need a whole lot more. The state just a couple of years ago passed a new law that, uh, basically says if you're doing, uh, rainwater collection uh, from a roof, so it limits it from a, a hardened structure like a roof, um, that you can have that, uh, waived from property tax improvements. Um, there's also uniform building code waivers that if you're putting in a five thousand gallon tank or smaller, it's, uh, already, uh, exempt under the uniform building code. You can just do it and put it in. Um, so I think we've got some good ones in place. We need to educate people more about. And I think we really need to look at how we create a whole lot more incentives for people to do rainwater collection, storage, and other kinds of things in regards to water. So I wa, I would like the task force to, uh, really look at that uh, in a big way and figure out some new solutions, new ways we can do that. And with that, I think we've had a pretty good discussion here. I would move that we, um, receive this, uh, report, and thank you all of the members to the task force for your work on that. And then secondly, authorize the Humboldt County Drought Task Force to expand membership as needed to include representatives from various state agencies, community service districts, tribes, and interest groups. And I think what Vice Chair, uh, Wilson said is very apt here that not everybody has to be part of the task force. Uh, many people can be brought to the task force as presenters with information. But anyway, that's my motion. It's basically the staff recommendation.
Great. Thank you Supervisor Madrone. Is there a second to move this forward?
Yep.
If there isn't, I'll make it. So, but Supervisor Bushnell, let's see, your, your mic is on, so.
So, I, I will second, um, staff, staff recommendations. Um, I, I want to, um, thank the task force, and um, I just want to say I know that, you know, it's a very, uh, the drought is very moving every day and recognizing that it is, um, something on, it, it's on everybody's mind every single day, water, fire. It's, it's the conversation. So, um, just thank you all for all your hard work. And, um, and we hope, can hope things will get better as soon as the rainy season gets here.
Yep. And so with that, uh, I just want to also thank staff and the board. And I heard a couple of times people saying they didn't want to be argumentative, but there was no, I, nothing about this was arguing. It's all discussion, and it's all good discussion. I really appreciate having some differing opinions and viewpoints. Uh, if we all had the same opinions and viewpoints, it wouldn't be here in a group of people discussing these things. So I see Supervisor Bone's got his hand up, so.
Well, I think as a board or individually, we can let our local state officials know that I still think that the exemption of water tanks, water storage, be it for domestic, be it for agriculture or whatever, are still working its way through the tax exemption status, if I'm not mistaken, because we were discussing this last week, and that's what I was told. And I haven't find anything. And with that being said, we have had a couple of grants turned down through Project Trellis because they didn't want to buy more water tanks and get reassessed. And I don't know if that's accurate, but if it is, the one thing we can do, there are people out there that want to put in water storage, and that still rises up, even though it's minor, for some of them, it's just a matter of fact, we're, we're creating, and in this situation, it might be. So if we could follow up on that, just to make sure if it's accurate information I have, but I think, and, and Director Ford and I talked last week about not necessarily streamlining, but easing the process of putting water storage in basically ponds, which are, uh, uh, have been working out well. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you Supervisor Bone. I think, um, Supervisor Bushnell has her hand up.
Yes, uh, thank you. I'm sorry. I just wanted to, um, ask Supervisor Madrone on the motion for clarification. So is it to, to accept um, reports through the task force from, um, other people, or is it to add people to the task force?
Uh, my motion was basically the staff recommendation is listed in the staff report, which was in short form to accept the report and to authorize the task force to add more members as they saw fit. That's basically what the staff recommendation is, I believe.
Uh, can I ask, um, thank you. Can I ask, Ryan, you, you disagree with the adding of more people, but would you agree with um, accepting, um, reports from outside sources?
I would. Thank you.
Just to, just to clarify, I think what, um, Ryan, correct if I'm wrong, Ryan, what you were saying is that you didn't think that the task force required the board of supervisors to come back and uh, ratify, uh, new members. Is that what I understood, in that you thought it would, should be up to the, up to the, the committee itself, or, or actually have no new members?
I, I'm fine either way, Supervisor. I, uh, as long as we have the ability to pull in those stakeholders and have them routinely sit in our meetings and provide input, that should suffice. And i- it's more just a way to broaden our information gathering, which we've been reaching out and gathering some reports from various stakeholders, uh, but they're by no means sitting routinely in our meetings. Uh, so I don't think it's necessary to make them, you know, official task force members, but if we have the ability to pull them in and routinely sit, gather input, uh, voice their concerns, that would be helpful.
Uh, and just for clarification, and, and, sorry, uh, Supervisor Bushnell, it's like, I interpreted that conversation just a little bit differently. I just wanted to make sure we were there. Are, are you okay with basically giving or just letting the, the, um, the task force choose if they want to or not want to bring on new members, and then we're going to be okay with that?
Um, I, I, I actually am not, and I'm going to probably withdraw my second because you're going to have a tug of war, I think, with who, I think that it would be, I feel, and I, maybe, uh, Director Ford or someone else can clue me in, maybe I'm wrong, but I feel like getting information and reports from, um, outside sources i- is really important for the task force, but I don't think it's necessary to add more people, um, to the task force unless Director Ford can tell me why, why we would think that would be necessary.
So I, 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 I think that we're all basically in agreement that the existing task force can stay as it is, provided that we can allow people to come in, present information, uh, present their concerns, assimilate that, use that, allow them to present whatever the case may be. There may be divergent opinions there, but at least, um, it becomes a forum for those voices to be heard and, and expressed.
So it, um, thank you, Director Ford. Um, does that motion, um, uh, Supervisor Madrone basically state that? Sorry, I was looking for the paperwork and I can't find it.
I, I think the staff recommendation was a little different. It was, um.
So, like, just, I'll just jump in as chair, just to try and get this moving and managed. Uh, Supervisor Madrone, do you want to modify, is it all right if we mod, do you want to modify your, your motion to just uh, have this task force stay as it is and allow them to bring in folks as needed for, uh, informational purposes?
Well, you know, I, I do feel strongly that the tribes and community service districts ought to be included in the task force, frankly. Uh, they have a major stake in all of this. And in fact, you know, we can see up on the Klamath and with the tribes, they're getting the biggest hit. They're not on the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District supply, right? So, and there are many service districts around the county that are going dry, uh, very soon. And so why wouldn't we want them at the table helping us provide solutions? I mean, I, I don't want to complicate things. Uh, this is the way it came to us as a staff recommendation to provide the flexibility for the task force to add members as they saw fit. And then there was a list of those possible members, including tribes, community service districts. Uh, you know, however this board wants to move forward with that, I think that's fine. I just think that it would be good to move beyond the current task force and include community service districts and tribes. That's my general sense, because they are major players in our county in regards to water provisions and other things. I don't know why we wouldn't want them at the table. Certainly, anybody could be requested to come and make presentations to the task force, et cetera. But why wouldn't we want them at the table as part of the task force? That's really the question. I didn't think it would be a big issue. I thought, well, let's broaden the table and include people that really matter and, and whose voices need to be as, as part of this task force. Now, maybe the task force feels it starts becoming unmanageable. I don't know what the issue is. Uh, maybe that's one of them. I'm seeing some nodding heads from two supervisors here. I suspect Rex is nodding his head as well, but I don't know why we wouldn't want them at the table. That's, that's my issue.
Okay. So, uh, for a lack of a second, I'll, I'll, I'll let, um, Supervisor Bushnell maybe take a shot at it if you want, otherwise.
Well, um, I, Rex's hand was up first. Do you want to?
Rex, I'm sorry. It's, I, I, without your smiling face, it's hard to, but I see your hand up there, so what, I'll, I'll jump to-
Yeah, and I, and I, and I wasn't nodding my head. I could go either way because I, I agree that, I mean, the, the tribes, community services districts, school districts, uh, I mean, you know, you know, convenience, you know? That's not me. Municipality should be involved. I think these are going to be public meetings. I think they're going to be open. I think they're going to be at the table willing to put their input, but I think what Ryan is trying to say, and what I fully understand, considering he probably gets on a lot more of these, this is an emergency situation. So do you want a meeting or two to decide who is represented by all those districts and tribes? Or they all can be involved in, in any which way they want. And in an emergency situation, I think the idea is to try to be as nimble as possible rather than, let's see how many people we can put. I'd, I'd much rather go to a meeting with five people than ten people. Because that means the meeting's going to be half as long, and you're going to be more productive. So with that, I'm, I'm hopefully, um, we can just go ahead and I like the idea because staff's recommendation written is a little bit different. The way um, I heard it was, we will do as needed or as the committee sees fit is what I heard. But then I heard staff's recommendation, which is two different things. I would give full faith in the committee to knowing who they need on the, there to help them. They're fully aware, aware of the importance of all the people that need to be involved, and I'm sure they're all going to get a seat at the table. It's just, I don't know. That, that's the only thing I'm saying. I, it's just, and I'm not trying to be difficult. I mean, if you, if we want to make it, add, add all the CSDs, all the tribes, and, and all municipalities, that can go too, but I just think quicker, quicker is faster and smaller.
Supervisor Bone, I think what I'm hearing is I have three supervisors, at least right now, who are okay with staff recommendation as written, and that's fine. And then Tracy, I'll let you jump in because you have your hand up, and then I'll take you back to Supervisor Bushnell, if that's okay. I'm just trying to manage ourselves through this as quickly as possible, so.
I just wanted to clarify, Vice Chair, that you did have a second. Supervisor Bushnell did second the motion.
I retracted.
I thought she retracted that motion. That's what I was saying. So, um, I, I'm happy to second the motion because I think the staff recommendation is fine. It's flexible enough. Uh, from my perspective, I totally understand where Supervisor Bushnell is coming from in terms of, um, in terms of the participation element of this, but I think that, um, our staff that is currently the task force or professionals in not only their fields but public process will do a good job of reaching out, and if not, we'll, we'll hear about it and we'll get back to it for sure. So, uh, with that, Supervisor Madrone?
Uh, yeah, just to clarify, the staff recommendation actually provides flexibility. It says to expand membership as needed, right? So I don't know what the issue is, because it's not saying you will do this. It's saying you can do this as you guys see fit. And as far as the CSD, clearly, we're not going to ask every CSD to be involved, but maybe there could be one representative of a CSD that is not on the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District, uh, to represent the service districts that are on their own, so to speak, and maybe a representative from the tribes. It's not that you have to add ten or fifteen more people, but maybe two more. At any rate, the way the staff recommendation is written provides a flexibility to the task force to make that decision. So I think that's a, a, a good way to go. I'm certainly ready to vote.
All right. And then, um, Supervisor Bushnell?
I'm not trying to complicate this, and I just want to clarify that, um, first of all, you have a, a, a commu, you know, who do you pick out of all the tribes, out of all the CSDs, if they all want a seat at the table? Who gets to do that? Who gets to say no? And I do understand, um, you know, the, the reasoning, but it doesn't, it sometimes can get very complicated, and that was my thought process. And, um, I know Ryan's hand was up, so I'm not trying to complicate this, and I do believe that all that information needs to, to come forth and be recognized and be heard. It's just, it can get very large if we're not careful.
All right, Ryan, I'm going to give you last staff voice coming from the, um, nineteen fifty-five fallout shelter there.
Uh, thank you. So just to kind of put it in perspective of how we handle normal emergencies, you know, where we have an EOC active, we staff positions called a liaison officer or an agency representative or an A rep, right? And those positions are essentially to provide and transmit information from the EOC to the agency that they're representing. They don't necessarily make, uh, decisions on behalf of the county, but they can commit resources, they can commit funding and people to the emergency. So the way that I have this in mind when written is to have those types of positions, not necessarily classified as a liaison officer or an agency rep, to be able to provide that information to the task force, relate it back to the agency that they're representing. to be able to provide that information to the task force, relate it back to the agency that they're representing, and provide input, but not make decisions on behalf of the county. So if, if that helps provide some, some clarification, I hope it does, but, um, like I said, I, I'm fine either way. If it's to expand membership or if it's just to bring those people to the table, uh, when we're looking at a localized, uh, issue, then that could be beneficial as well. Thank you.
All right, I think we're ready to take this to a vote. I, I think that the way it's written by staff is as flexible as it could be. Um, and so with that, if no one has any more discussion on this, let's take a roll call vote, please.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Bone?
Of course.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
The vote carries four zero.
Thank you. Um, it is noon. I would be willing to take on one shorter item if we have it, but, um, going back to staff, can you just remind me where we left off on this agenda? So I, uh, I know where we're at here. Either Alicia or.
Wait, the, the next natural progression would be to move along to the COVID update. But I would expect that that's probably going to be a little bit more intensive. Uh, following the COVID update, you have the item to evaluate canceling the August 31st meeting and two clerk of the board items to consider appointments to committees and commissions.
Okay, so I think, um, let's take a half hour break right now. If that's okay with everybody, um, if that's enough, we're most, plus we're at home, so we don't have to go too far. Um, and, uh, let's, um, let's see what time, what time here, 12:01. Actually, let's, let's do a 40 minute break, 12:40, we're gonna come back at 12:40, if that's all right. And, uh, and, uh, fuel up, uh, for the next half of the day here. Okay, I'll see everybody at 12:40. All right, so here we are, um, we pulled this from.
Hell, you do a lunch, Mike.
I don't know, I just ate a bagel. How about that? It was really exciting. Had a phone call with the.
That's what I'd say.
Wonderful, all right, so here we go. Uh, we, uh, this was pulled from consent. I was one of the, if not, I'm sure I wasn't the only commit, uh, excuse me, supervisor pulled us from consent. It just seemed like it's an issue that we gotta keep on top of, and so I'm happy to get a report. I apologize, I was absent on the meeting last week when we had some discussion about this on Friday. I had a family obligation that was previously scheduled. So, uh, without further ado, I'm gonna ask, uh, Dr. Hoffman to give us a bit of an update about where we are and what's happening next.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson, thank you, everyone. So if there's one thing the past few weeks have shown us, it's that we should always be prepared for rapid changes with COVID-19. The arrival of the Delta variant has dramatically changed the situation in our county. The rise in cases seen in many counties has now hit here with 400% increases in cases in a matter of a few weeks. Along with this was a dramatic rise in hospitalizations, peaking at 25 hospitalizations, uh, as of last week. And, um, again, today, uh, we're looking at upwards of 24 hospitalizations across the county. We suspect that this may go higher, and we're watching the situation in the hospitals very closely. In previous surges, the hospitalizations remained well under 20 beds. The hospital staff, clinic staff, public health staff, everyone in healthcare have all been working tirelessly for 18 months to treat and prevent COVID-19. We're dealt a devastating blow with all this news. Many in the community are noticing more illness, voluntarily canceling events due to concern, uh, returning to safety measures that were taken during the last COVID surges. It was with this urgent necessity that public health decided in consultation with the many community leaders across our county to reinstate the mask mandate effective 12:01 a.m., Saturday, August 7th. We took this step to preserve the balance in our rural healthcare system that's already under a tremendous amount of strain, to ensure that we can continue to keep businesses open, keep events ongoing safely, and to keep schools on track toward full reopening in just a few weeks. Would like to share publicly with, uh, some data, which was attached to, um, to the agenda today, on the current surge from Humboldt County Epidemiology Program. Uh, the graph you'll find shows the case rate for both unvaccinated and fully vaccinated populations in our county over the course of the pandemic. And you can see the steep rise in cases with this latest, uh, Delta surge, much larger than the two pre, previous surges, um, in the winter and the spring. Uh, and you can see a stark difference between, uh, both the cases and the hospitalizations among the fully vaccinated in Humboldt County. Our local data is consistent with what is seen nationally with Delta variant. While we are seeing some breakthrough cases, we are also seeing a very large reduction in hospitalizations and death among the fully vaccinated, which reinforces the importance of getting vaccinated. There've been many ups and downs in this pandemic. This is another one of those big pendulum swings. Uh, and given the course so far, it's unlikely to be the last one. The hospitals are preparing for potentially even more surge of cases in the coming weeks, and they have prepared, just as they have prepared in the past. Public health is scaling up testing and investigations again. Uh, we have several, as, just as we have several times throughout the pandemic to deal with surges. And in the end, vaccination will remain the key tool to getting us out of the pandemic by preventing severe disease and death from COVID-19. We urge everyone who's eligible to seek vaccination. And if you're unsure about getting vaccinated, please seek information from a trusted source on vaccine, uh, someone from your community, a healthcare provider, a leader. And with that, I really wanna encourage everyone right now to, um, get tested if you have any symptoms of COVID-19. Um, if you have been exposed recently to someone who you know had COVID-19, please quarantine, uh, for the full 10 days. Um, and, uh, if you, uh, are, you know, haven't been vaccinated yet, please go out and search for vaccination sites. We have many across the county. So thank you and look forward to the discussion.
There you go, sorry about that, my computer is lagging today. So, um, do we have any comments from board members at all before moving to public comment on this? And then also, um, if you have a public comment on this, this is the time when you wanna raise your hand. Uh, and I see one, anybody else? All right, Cole, you got a couple, okay, great. Uh, public commenter ending in 7454, uh, please unmute yourself and hop on in the conversation.
I always try and call in first in case nobody else does, so they have a chance to, uh, fill in or something there, so. Really interesting what's moving forward with this particular, uh, COVID situation. Many of us look at the vaccination as just a segue to actually catch this again and have our bodies, uh, develop a customized vaccine or develop the antigens that are protecting us personally. This is a question I have, is how do we, or how does anybody go in, and I like to have this asked, where do we get the antigen tests? Because to me, that's probably more important than whether you have it or not, whether you've developed the antigens. That seems to be the future, there's so many, I'm guessing there's probably, the way this thing is moving, a significant portion of the non-vaccinated that aren't getting this, because they've already developed their own antigens, which I feel is superior to the vaccine. So how, how do we go about that? And how do we determine, I guess you need to do random samples as far as how many people have the antigen? I think this thing is moving along quite moderately. Uh, the other question I have, uh, my understanding is, you said there's 24, were 25 hospitalizations or are 25, were 24? What is the total? I was actually told that there were just about no people in the Mad River facility. And then I also, my question is, how many, I think you had a tent facility set up also? So just as far as full transparency, how many are the total beds available within the county to, uh, treat what you'd call hospitalizations that would be with or without the fanciest equipment? So what, what is our, what is our capacity and capability for that? Look forward to having a few answers on this one. I, I guess, uh, apparently you've, you've, uh, developed a new position there, you have a new employee in your department there, and yet everybody else seems to still be there. So we, we have another position, so I'm always curious. Thomas Mulder's not here, I guess, today to ask where the money is going and how it's being spent, so I figured I'd fill in a little bit for, where is Thomas today, anyway? Thomas, if you're out there, call him. Uh, so anyway, uh, that's my comments on the COVID thing. I, I think we're all gonna get through this, I think this will move a lot quicker. And instead of being like a stalled out storm, it sits here and beats you up, I think this particular one will move through rather quickly, rather than be dragged out for a year. That's my comments and questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, and so moving on to the next public commenter, this would be, uh, ending in 0326. Uh, if you, 03, okay, unmute yourself. There you go, we can hear you now.
Hi, this is Charles Wilson. Uh, my wife wanted to say, make a separate comment on some, uh, she is, has something different than I'm saying. Anyway, uh, it's wonderful that band music has finally returned to the foot of C Street in Eureka on Thursdays after a year and a half. That's a long time. Two weeks ago on Thursday, that's, uh, that's July 29th, I saw the county vaccine booth there, and I thought I would ask a question of some inconsistent information I had heard. A man standing in front of the booth had a county, uh, of public health name tag, so I thought I would ask him. I said, "The National Institutes of Health website says that vaccines that receive EUAR are considered experimental until the FDA formally approves it." Reuters Fact Check inconsistently said that the vaccine was not experimental. Rappler Fact Check also said that the vaccine was not experimental. And so I asked him, "What does the county say?" The man walked back in the booth without answering. On the back of his shirt, he had EMT in big letters. I called out to him, "What does EMT stand for?" He responded, "Google it." I then asked, "Are you the police?" He came back to me, eh, didn't say anything there, stood in the space between me and the front table and has commanded, "I want you to leave." I was surprised, but I responded, "This is public property and I have a right to stand here." He repeated his demand louder and started pushing me with his stomach, he's got a big stomach. So I repeated louder that I had the right to stand on a public property. I saw a second man who also had EMT on his shirt come up, and he had a pepper spray can in his hand. I could see that they wanted to create a confrontation and escalate it. A friend of mine came up behind me with her cellphone together with my wife, and they, the second man put away his pepper spray, apparently because he didn't want to be photographed. I pulled my wife and my friend away and we left them. I never talked to the three, I, I later talked to the three, you read, to the three Eureka police officers there, and they said that the EMT meant Emergency Medical Technician. If county health person, department personnel are not capable of answering a simple question of fact, or even referring the question to someone who did know, we get the impression that the department will start using Gestapo bully force tactics instead. You're trying to get somebody to take a vaccine and you're using bully forces. I hear that the pharmaceuticals have applied to get the vaccines fully approved, but they have not even been partially approved. The FDA has only authorized EUA vaccine. Our language and laws have many, and I've done that for 80, I've been 80 some years. If the Vax, COVID vaccine is considered to be, is the COVID vaccine considered to be experimental until it has been approved to prevent disease by the FDA? I wanna know what the Department of Public Health thinks about that. Thank you. Here's not, here's my wife, she wants to say something separately.
Okay, this is Genevieve, I'm a nurse for 42 years, I've been talking to different places. To me, this is a situation is detrimental. Today's CDC say the people who take the vaccine still can have transmissible, so they advise people to wear a mask with a vaccinated people. But then, on the other hand, they talk about unvaccinated people causing the variant, and this is totally unscientific. Uh, my, my point is that MRSA caused by people using, uh, antibiotic carelessly, that's causing the MRSA. And then we have, and people acting very hysterical right now. Like, I'm trying, I'm a nurse, somebody told me a Corona fear tonic that I talk about, three lemon and one and a half cup pineapple juice, and you put garlic, ginger powder, turmeric powder, and camphor, it helped her to go through the, uh, the COVID, where she has COVID. So I share this information to people. People come by, say, "You touch it, I don't want to get it." And beside, my grandson is right here, uh, you're not social distancing, and, uh, you're gonna kill him. So they called the police on me. Here I am, I'm trying to help people. My point is, right now, people vaccinated, since the majority get vaccinated, we have more COVID cases. And what is that explanation? They, so people say, "We don't die, we hospitalized." Hey, I don't die either, even though if I'm not vaccinated. I was not vaccinated, like I told people before, uh, for a million dollar. Friend of mine down the street, for six weeks now, she cannot walk outside, enjoy the fresh air, because her ten toes are hurting. And this is the symptom of vaccine. The day before she get the vaccine, I talked to her, but her husband forced her to take the vaccine. So now she hasn't been walking, she's gonna die pretty soon without the, uh, the sunshine and all that. I, I won't, I, I don't need to get any information. People down the street like that, you think anybody gonna force me to take it? This is called medical sovereignty. Nobody can force anybody to do anything. If you're choice, you wanna take it, take it. I never ask people to not to take it. But by my point is, seriously, yesterday, I got read about some of doctors, famous doctors say, the vaccine come out is mRNA, is a genetic modifier. It will causing all your cell to make spike protein. All you need is spike protein on your lung cell, not the, all the cell. When your cell making spike protein, it will cause hemorrhage, and cause, uh, problem with your platelet, either bleeding or you get blood clot. And then you cause all the problem. How many people, young people took this vaccine, have 150 cases of large, in, uh, large enlargement of the heart and severe headache? These are also caused by blood clot, like a, like a stroke. So here we are, at the beginning, everybody died from COVID, and talk about hospitality, uh, hospital had no bed. I talked to so many people, there's not a problem. Right now, people get vaccinated, and then.
Hello, three minutes is up, so we have, uh, one more, um, person from the public, and that is Emily. I'm just going from memory, Emily, because again, your name on the thing is not Emily.
Well done, Mike, um, thank you. Uh, sorry, you're on speaker, oh, well. Um, yeah, I, I, I agree with some of the speakers that have spoken. The difference between the COVID vaccine and the meningitis or the polio vaccine is that the meningitis and the polio vaccine stop transmission. The COVID vaccine does not stop transmission. Therefore, it will still go through the population creating variants. These variants will be vaccine resistant. This doesn't necessarily mean that they will be bad or worse, but they could be. And this, I just wanna clarify that the difference between this COVID vaccine and other vaccines is that it does not stop transmission. The CDC and Fauci have said this outright, while they continued to, yeah, they've said this outright. And this needs to be, this, the public needs to be educated on this, because I'm constantly being told that I am a Trumper and a Republican, and I'm ignorant, because I don't wanna take an experimental drug. And, and the, and also, like the man said before, if an EMT isn't willing to admit that this is an experimental drug, which it is, it's only been, um, being used for eight months, there were only two months of prior testing on it. There's only about eight to six months of data on this. This is not a, a debatable question, this is reality. And healthcare providers need to be reflecting this reality. I am not saying don't take the vaccine. I think the vaccine for specific demographics is very necessary. But I think this silver bullet, um, approach is very dangerous and is unscientific. It is unscientific. I would just ask that the board of supervisor, while they're talking about COVID, disseminate this information. This is very important information that people need to know about their own health and wellbeing that is not being propagated by the mainstream corporate media. And it is on your shoulders to educate the public. Hey, everybody get the vaccine if you want to get it. But we need to be educated about what we're putting in our body. And these are not debatable, uh, facts. These are facts presented by the CDC and Fauci. Thank you for your time, for my, for the time.
All right. Comment, we have one more so far, um, which is, um, a number ending in six, eight, seven, six. So six, eight, seven, six. Please unmute yourself. We can hear you now.
Hello, my name is Shoshana. I live in Arcata and I've been working with many of our events creators and arts organizations this last year as we have tried to pivot and offer things safely to our community. And, uh, it'd be apparent of a kid, two kids who have been working with a distress and distresses last year through the systems that they've had to learn through. Um, I would love to advocate for our businesses, for our health system, for the care of our community and for our arts organizations and beloved community events to please, please consider the vaccination. My entire family has gotten it. I know that there are some breakthrough cases that, um, that, uh, it, it happens. I don't think there's any kind of guarantee that you won't get this disease, but it does definitely seem to make a much reduced impact on our health systems to have more vaccinated people and it does seem to make a difference. And please, if you're on the fence, this is a great time to get that done. There are many, many opportunities and places to go within the community. And a lot of our scientists are recommending that it is, it is just fine. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Shoshana. Is there anybody else? There is no one else. So we're going to close public comment now at this time. And hold on, let's go.
Steve, your, I think your mic turned down again.
What? It turned down again?
Yep.
Hold on one second there. Let me go back to this. Hold on, system preferences. Let's see here, going to, uh, output, input. That's so weird. Okay, is that better? All right.
Yes.
All right, here we go. I don't know what it is about this computer. It's got a mind of its own today. The ghost in the machine. All right, so if no one else, I, I just want to shout out to our staff and all their efforts to help get Humboldt County vaccinated and, um, and dealing with this masking in terms of like encouraging masking in public spaces and also encouraging distancing as well as really, this is, this is a time when we really do need to hunker down as much as possible with relationship to trying to not infect one another with the, with this, with the coronavirus. I just keep receiving, and we've heard some of this, this idea that a vaccine or masking has to be perfect in order to be used, has to have 100% effect, efficiency or effectiveness, or that the information is varying in different directions and has all reasons to do nothing. And I think that that is just not where, this is not advisable, I think, in my opinion. It's, um, uh, it, it's, it's just in aggregate, putting those things together helps reduce these impacts. And right now, our hospitals are, and I, I heard, it's true, Mad River doesn't necessarily have as many, uh, hospital cases in terms of COVID, but St. Joe's is overloaded and it's not just beds. I want to put out there, it's staff. Our, the staff at the hospitals are just overworked and they're just getting hammered. Um, and even with some outbreaks within their facilities as well. And again, vaccinations are going to help reduce those numbers. It's not absolute. Masking reduces numbers, not absolute. This is all about, uh, addressing this in the aggregate. And I'm very, very supportive of our vaccine efforts and I'm hoping that we can continue to see more. Um, and with that, we can, we received the report. I don't think we need to vote on anything necessarily, but I appreciate the efforts. And, um, I want to make sure that, uh, that, um, that the effort of the, of our, of county staff on this to get the word out continues and I'm very appreciative. So thank you. And Supervisor Madrone, I see your hand up, so now's your time.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Uh, yeah, what a conundrum, right? Um, I don't know why Marin's at 84% vaccinated and we're only at 54%. It's kind of an interesting, uh, observation, I guess. But, you know, the bottom line is, there are people, well, I'm vaccinated. Let me just start there. I'm vaccinated. Um, everybody in my family that can get vaccinated is vaccinated. I got vaccinations when I was a kid, you know, polio and all these other things. But there are people who have reasons for not getting vaccinations. And there are people who feel strongly about doing it. And, you know, somehow or another, I think we need to be creating an approach that is inclusive somehow. Right now, what we're getting is a lot of us and them. You know, when we did the, the self attestation situation over the last several weeks, as Chair Bass said the other day, it seemed to be a complete failure. I think we all noted that while 45% of the county is still unvaccinated and therefore should have still been masking, uh, when you went out and about, literally 1% were masked, right? So something was very wrong with those numbers. People were not being honest about their self attestations in terms of whether they were vaccinated or not. Uh, so there's a lot of reasons why the spread increased, including the fact that the Delta variant is far more contagious and far more easily spread. But, you know, we're never going to get everybody vaccinated. And so somehow or another, we're going to need to find a way to not divide our community. Because when we were doing the self attestation, and I said this at the board last month, suddenly if you went to the store wearing a mask, people started veering away from you because they thought you were unvaccinated and that's why you were masked. And I thought, wow, walk towards the masked person, you know, I mean, stay six feet away, right? But it really is interesting, this reverse stuff that's going on out there and people accusing each other and getting gnarly and it's just nasty, you know? And somehow or another, in the way we're going about doing this, we need to figure out a way to be more inclusive of how we get everybody working together to get this virus under control and, but not be blaming each other for stuff. Uh, it's just, it's just crazy the way that's happening. And I don't know exactly what that is. When I look at our county staff and I think about employment and employees, it might very well be that we need to step up and provide more ability for people to work from home. We need to provide more childcare for people if we expect people to be, you know, engaging in these things. There are lots of things that I think we can do that could provide some ability for people to feel very strongly against vaccinations, to still go about living their lives, but not necessarily infect the rest of the community. And obviously, even though I'm vaccinated, I could spread it, I could carry it and spread it because people are still getting it. And so I have a very big responsibility whenever I go out to be masked and do the best I can with distancing and all these things. So I don't know what the answer is here. I certainly don't have them. But I do know that right now, what's going on is we're dividing this community. And I'm not saying anybody on this call or in the county are doing that. It's just the nature of what's happening in Humboldt. We've got a large percentage of people who aren't vaccinated currently and may or may not ever get vaccinated. So what do we do about that? You know, can we think more creatively about how we manage that in, in this kind of a world where we can try and keep our community together, all working towards, you know, the common goal of keeping everybody safe? And I think that's going to take us being even more creative and providing even more resources to allow people for options that don't include spreading the virus, however we manage that. So I just, I just felt the need to say that. Um, and I know you're all probably feeling some of this as well, but again, no specific solutions, but I think we need to do better on that.
Okay, Supervisor Bush now.
Um, thank you. Um, I wanted to thank Dr. Hoffman for answering all my questions that I've had and the emails that you've sent, um, and updating us all. I also just really want to, um, recognize that, you know, we're in a, kind of going backwards and that's scary for a lot of people. Our communities are, there's a lot of positives out there and, you know, people in our communities are scared and nervous. And I just really want our community and our, you know, state just to pull together and recognize that we have to get through this. And as Supervisor Madrone said, division is not where we need to be right now, that we just need to work together to get past and through the COVID surges and to get our communities healthy.
All right, Supervisor Bone.
Yeah, thanks. Um, yeah, I, I think the best thing we can do is education because I, I just counted. I've got 14 different sources of communications this morning that shows a East Hampton doctor talking to a school board. And, and all the misinformation out there, you know, we heard today that it's an experiment that, you know, it's going to clot and it's going to cause problems. I mean, I think there's been 179 back, 179 million vaccinations. There have been a little bit better than 6,000 deaths. We don't know if it's all related to the, to the vaccine, but there are people that had taken the vaccine and died shortly after. We don't know. Um, I can, I can tell you, I've, I've, and what's really cool about it is a lot of my friends are, not a lot, but a few of my friends are not vaccinated. They know I am. I think everybody in the county pretty much knows I'm vaccinated by now. Um, and I can let everybody know, is I, I'm sitting here at 98.8, feeling healthy as hell, just had a big old salad for lunch. And I owe that to the vaccination because I'm sitting here with the, the COVID-19. I don't know what variant. They don't tell you what variant. I found out. And that may be a question of that. But what I'm saying is, even my friends who are not going to get it for, and they're, they're sharing this misinformation, you know, some are sharing, some are people I don't know, a lot of them are people I do know, sharing the misinformation and they believe it. So I don't know, if we're talking about doing a better job, I think education goes to the top of the list. I mean, if, if we can educate people that it's a good thing, or it's safe, or whatever the case may be, we can talk about, you know, the community. But I don't think the community is as fractured as you think. I think we all have different opinions. But I can honestly say, I haven't lost a friend and I've taken a pretty strong stance on vaccinations. And I haven't lost any friends out of it. I've got a few people disappointed, but they'll come back around. So I just think, is our education, I want to say, um, and again, we don't always agree and we won't always agree, but I want to thank Dr. Hoffman. He has had a very open line of communication to me throughout this. So I know what my rules are, what I should be doing. And he didn't say I had to go lockdown in my bedroom, but I hate my bedroom right now, guys. Um, but anyway, I, he's been very good about answering all my questions. Um, was able to get our staff tested because I was concerned about that and they have, you know? So I was just lucky the few days before that I didn't have a lot of contact with a lot of people for whatever reason that was or elongated. So I just think education, if we're going to put something out there, we do education. I see a lot of people putting incentives, gas cards, um, shots for shots up at Six Rivers Brewery. I see a, I posted a, uh, dispensary in McKinleyville is doing something. I mean, there's a lot of different options, but I think the whole idea behind this is education. I don't know, I don't think we can not tell people that this is, you know, what we consider is safe. And, and you guys, maybe everybody else is right and we're wrong. I don't know. But at my age and everything else, I'm just really happy that I feel good and I have the COVID and hopefully I'll be double whammy when I'm done. So thank you and I appreciate Dr. Hoffman at the moment, but I'll still keep you on your toes.
All right, great. Thanks. We'll take it back to staff. I do have to say, Supervisor Bone, I'm getting flashbacks from a year and a half ago when I was quarantined in my bedroom, uh, right at the very beginning of this episode. Um, so welcome to the club, buddy. Uh, we have, uh, Dr. Hoffman and, uh, Director Stevens. Um, so you guys choose who goes first here.
I think Director Stevens was up first.
Okay. Uh, I appreciate the conversation about, um, providing information for folks. And I just wanted to reiterate, we had shared at one point in a news release a few weeks ago, the, the Northern California Health Officer Statement on, um, vaccines. And they address a lot of the myths that are going around, around the vaccines in particular. And I just wanted to highlight one of them is, you know, the use is experiment, the vaccine is experimental and was rushed into use. It reads, "The vaccines are relatively new technology, but hardly experimental. The Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine uses vector or carrier technology that has been studied and tested previously in a number of vaccines for almost 20 years, including Zika virus, influenza viruses, HIV, and most recently Ebola. The Pfizer and Moderna vaccine use messenger RNA technology. The, the basic science around this has been studied for nearly a quarter of a century, with the biggest breakthrough discovered in 2005. The mRNA technology has been developed and studied for Zika virus, something I can't pronounce, babies and influenza. Uh, it was, was production rushed? Yes, production drew on existing technology and was prepaid. So manufacturers were willing to build their facilities before knowing if the vaccine would be approved, which is a historic success." So yeah, the bottom line, as Supervisor Bone pointed out, is that the science used to create the vaccine is decades old. It's not experimental and hundreds of millions of people who've received the vaccine are proof that it is safe and effective. So I would refer folks to that if they're interested in more information about kind of what, what misinformation is out there.
Thanks, Director Stevens. And I, yeah, just, um, so taking a moment to maybe educate on some of the things that, that came up today, um, like Supervisor Bone, um, mentioned, I, if anyone hasn't checked out that Rancho statement, um, I was very heavily involved in writing it and I think it's a great, um, place that all the health officers from your northern, uh, rural region in California came together to put that, um, you know, stamp of approval on. So it's, it's really a representation of the rural north and, and our feelings of the health officers. Um, so some of the things that, that, you know, have come up today that I think we can quickly address with some education. Let's, let's, um, think about hospital capacity. So our hospitals, um, are, you know, while they certainly have more capacity to deal with more COVID cases, um, that is not where we want to go. So we are at, you know, the, a place now where, um, about 20% of the hospital beds are COVID right now. So that's, that's huge. And you think about what that means. It means that a bed that is needed for someone who had a heart attack, someone who was in a car accident, um, someone who had, had, um, you know, appendicitis, they might not have a bed right now. So they're canceling elective procedures at St. Joe's Hospital to make for more bed capacity. Um, they're looking for more staff. We put in requests for resources to multiple agencies. We put in a request to the state for staff for the hospital. Um, and this is just getting started. So we don't want to get to the point where we're putting patients in hallways, on gurneys, putting people in gift shops, having ambulances line up 10, 15 deep, waiting to get into the hospital. That's, that's what we're trying to prevent here. So, uh, as far as Mad River, Mad River absolutely has COVID patients and they have for the last several weeks. They don't always have COVID patients, but, um, I, right now, um, at this, at a point during this week, we had every hospital across the county with a COVID patient. Um, so it, it's really impacting the hospitals a lot. Um, a, a big indicator of how well this vaccine works, um, is not that it's preventing the spread among the vaccinated, but how well is it, uh, working in areas to reduce the hospitalizations? And if you look at, uh, some recent data, uh, you know, we mentioned places like Marin County with super high vaccination rates, San, San Francisco County with really high vaccination rates. They're having case rates as high as, as Humboldt County, but their hospitalization rate is very low right now. It's the low, some of the lowest in the state. So when you have high vaccination rates, you have low hospitalization rates. So we knew from the beginning that this vaccine- So we knew from the beginning that this vaccine was not going to necessarily prevent COVID in every single person, but it was going to prevent hospitalization, severe disease and death. And so now we're seeing with the Delta variant, uh, you know, a difference of order of magnitude in terms of infectiveness. And so it's spreading much more easily. And I think if you look at that graph that we put out, um, you saw that in the previous waves, there were some breakthrough cases. There were very small numbers though, but this one, there's a lot more. And as one of the callers mentioned, there will be other, uh, variants in the future. And so we want to try to get that, uh, risk of those other variants down as low as possible by vaccination. These are not experimental. Um, you know, emergency use authorization is not an experimental use. It's an emergency use. We are in an emergency situation. Uh, we have, uh, an emergency response. We have a declared health emergency. So it is an emergency use and they are very close to getting full FDA approval. We're hearing now that, that it looks like within the next few weeks or maybe early September, they will get full FDA approval. So they've been studied, they're safe, they're effective, they're doing their job. We just need more people to get them. On natural immunity, natural immunity is not as good as vaccination immunity. There was a MMWR provided CDC last week, um, that addresses this. They did a big study retrospective looking at, um, people who had natural immunity versus, uh, full vaccination immunity versus a combination of natural immunity with, with some, uh, partial vaccination immunity. And the vaccination immunity won out every time. Vaccination immunity is consistent and it is predictable. So we know if you get two shots of the mRNA var, uh, mRNA vaccine, or a single shot of the Johnson and Johnson, you will have a predictable vaccination response and you will be protected. If you get COVID, we don't know that that's going to protect you from future COVID infections. Our hospitalization rates are much lower among the, the fully vaccinated. We're seeing a, uh, a few of those breakthrough cases being hospitalized again in patient populations that are expected. Patients who are much, much older, who have many pre-existing conditions, um, for, you know, things that would predispose them to worse COVID. However, on the other side, we're seeing young people without a lot of comorbidities, without a lot of conditions, getting hospitalized who are unvaccinated. So you can see that, that again, the vaccines are doing their job. So. Let's, you know, let's all work to continue to educate. Um, you know, we want to, uh, do everything we can to get the word out, to get the vaccine out there, to have a safe environment, to vaccinate our community. And so, um, you know, we, we will keep working on that and, um, hopefully, uh, we'll get through this in a, you know, the next couple of weeks or months, uh, as this next surge moves through.
Great. Thanks, staff. Thanks to all supervisors that have been, uh, fellow supervisors who have been helping with, uh, this, these efforts to keep our community safe. I know there, um, have been many, uh, events that have been canceled, which is, you know, kind of, this is real bummer for a lot. And there's a lot of worries about, you know, what's going to happen with regards to, um, kids getting back to school. I, I do have a question with, we had some predictions for when the vaccination would be available for 12 and under some time ago. Are there any updates to that?
Um, I'll, I'll give one update. I, I don't have anything concrete that it's going to move. You know, the projections are still, um, much later in the fall, potentially is, um, late as winter, uh, you know, 2022. Um, but I will say that the American Academy of Pediatrics is the largest, um, physician organization of pediatricians in our country. Um, recently put out a position statement a few days ago, um, that they feel, um, we shouldn't wait any longer to authorize the vaccines for the younger kids. They feel that the data is sufficient. It's been well studied. We've enrolled enough people. We've had several months of those trials and data. Um, and so they are urging the FDA to consider earlier approval. Um, and that, you know, that's again, I think when we look at the scientific community has really rallied behind these vaccines. There is no wavering. There, there is full consensus among physicians, among the scientists in our, uh, in our community, in our country. Um, these vaccines are safe, they're effective and they're doing their jobs. And, you know, if anything, people want it to go faster and, uh, want to break down the barriers that may be slowing down the process and, uh, potentially worsening the pandemic.
This sort of reminds me of the debate we had when, when seat belts were, you know, and, you know, mandatory or part of the law. And then people didn't, wanted to debate the, the, the data on that. But the, sure, occasionally a seatbelt malfunctions, occasionally a seatbelt can cause the accident. Occasionally a seatbelt can be the reason you have serious injury. But as a whole, it reduces all of those impacts. Um, and, um, you know, that, that, and that along with helmet laws and other things, really reduced emergency, um, loads into the hospitals for those accidents, which was causing real problems in, in a lot of communities. And so there was a response to that. And I think this was not dissimilar in that response. Um, although, you know, we don't, you only come in once or twice for your vaccine. You don't have to do it every day and not be moving around. Any case, um, I appreciate everyone's, uh, efforts on this. It's true. Education is the way to go. Again, it's not just vaccines and it's not just masking. It's, and it's, it's how we, um, our behaviors and gatherings if we choose to and, and those sorts of things. And so, um, in, in aggregate, we do all that we can to bring down those numbers as much as we can. With that, I think we're, we're ready to move on to the next item. I don't think there's anything we need to vote on unless, uh, unless, uh, council thinks that we need to vote on filing a report or anything like that. Jefferson?
Vice Chair, I don't think it's necessary. You've obviously received a report. I don't think that requires an official action.
Great. Then we will not have an official action. Appreciate staff being here, helping get the word out and get back to that, doing that more. I appreciate it very much. Okay. With that, we're going to move on to, and it's Alicia is, can you help me with this? I think it's the first item of the, of the items brought to us by board members. And I think that might be the get the meeting schedule item. Is that the next thing?
That's exactly correct.
All right. Doing my best here to find it.
You're doing a great job.
Okay. Here we are. Um, all right. This is item H1, consider canceling the August 31st meeting, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting. And this is brought to us by Supervisor Bone. So take it away, Mr. Bone.
Did I hear that, Mike? I'm sorry. You were garbled for some reason. I'm like, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now. I can hear you. Uh, we are at the item H1, considering canceling the August 31st, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting. And you are the, the presenter of that item.
Well, and since then, I can, I can go either way on this. It's just, I had scheduled a, um, something that I can't get out of on the 31st, and that's a fifth Tuesday. So I took it for granted. We wouldn't be having a meeting and, and I did it. And I haven't missed very many meetings in 10 years. So I was just trying to see if it was necessary. I think our Assistant CIO, I mean, I, I fully understand that you guys can do very well without me, but I just, uh, I was just, uh, I just threw it out there and see if anybody bid on it.
I appreciate that. I mean, I, I don't know. I, I think, I think unless, I, I'm okay with moving forward with the meeting. If it's in the best interest of having us move forward with items and not getting backlog. Um, you know, I've had family matters that have kept me from meetings here and there, and actually medical matters in the past. And I, I've been happy that, um, the board chair at the time and members of the board would, would move, you know, if there were things that were important to me, just move them to the next meeting. That was fine. Or, or found a supervisor to carry my voice. Um, but I, I let the other board members speak to that. So Supervisor Madron, you were the first to raise the hand. So go ahead.
Um, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Yeah, I can go either way as well. Um, my, what I want to know is from staff, where are we at? I mean, we just took two meetings off, uh, and we're taking a third one off. I suspect that's going to stack up a lot of work, but I don't know. So I would love to hear from our, uh, Acting CIO, what the volume is in terms of things, uh, coming to the board. And if we cancel this meeting, would it create a big problem? That's, that's kind of what I'm wondering. What's our workload?
Uh, I think anytime your board goes dark for two weeks and in making this decision, you should also consider that September 7th, there is not a board meeting that day. So this would have your board dark for two straight weeks. Does tend to compound the next meeting as indicated by today's meeting. Um, we're also in the year-end closing process. Um, so there tends to be some, some work that has to come before your board for that work, that process to be completed. Um, is it, it, is it something we can't adjust and pivot to accommodate? I think yes, that would be fine, but, but there may be a, a fun meeting to follow that break.
All right.
Hey, Chair Wilson, and as a matter of saving time and not to cut off Supervisor Bushnell, but since it is a long meeting, you guys have a great meeting on the 31st. It is impossible for me to be there. As long as, you know, you guys don't screw up the whole general plan on that day, I'm good with it.
And to be respectful, I, I, if there is anything on the agenda, like I said, that you want to reach out to staff and/or the whoever's chairing it, I'm assuming that will be Virginia, then I, I'm sure we can make adjustments. And Supervisor Bushnell still has her hands up, so I'll, I'll switch over to there.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to ask why normally it says we don't have a meeting on the fifth, um, Tuesday and why there is one now?
Go, go ahead.
Sorry, through the chair. Uh, this was established in the calendar that we bring to your board early in the year. And it was to accommodate for the fact that your board, uh, just returned from a two-week break, which is typically when you would be dark and have some time to enjoy the summer and your families. Um, and then also consideration that the first weekend in September was a dark week. So trying to avoid another two-week gap.
And I, I can address the question about where this fifth Tuesday, the mysterious fifth Tuesday come up. And from my, what I learned is there just was basically the tradition of four meetings a month, right? And it tip, for tip typically, in that if there was five Tuesdays in a month, then okay, take a break for one time off and then jump back in again. And that just had been a tradition. And so that's kind of, that's the way I understand the fifth Tuesday sort of came about. But in what we had been doing in the adjustments is that what we're finding is that there were reasons, there were typical meetings that we were missing either for CSAC conventions or RCRC conventions, as well as, um, fam, uh, school holidays schedules. So that some of us, like myself and, and in staff who have kids in school, there were some adjustments associated with that. So the fifth Tuesday just kind of be, came a little out of fashion, I guess. Does that, is that?
Well, I actually know about the fifth Tuesday. I read about that. So.
Okay.
And, and why we do that. So that, that was pretty easy. I just didn't know that, because I wasn't here last year, that we, as a board, voted to keep that fifth Tuesday in August. So I was just clarifying that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bye. I didn't, I don't mean to over explain. I just.
Oh, it's okay. Yeah.
All right, Supervisor Bone.
Again, we can just pull the item on, at my request, to not even have to waste any more time for a vote. Move on to the next item if you'd like.
That's it. I'm in. Let's do it. I might.
Thank you.
And, uh, yes, uh, Tracy.
Just confirming that we're pulling the items. So there will be no public comment on it.
That'll be fine.
Uh, let me check with council on that.
The, uh, the item was on the agenda, so you should still take public comment.
All right, we're going to take public comment. Let's do it. Uh, hold on. I got to bring that up on my thing here. Hold on. All right, we have one, uh, public commenter. That is 7454. And so now's your three minute.
Uh, Supervisor Mike Wilson, I really want to thank you for going to county council for determination on that. Um, I've seen a very lack of questions, uh, asked sometimes, and that's, uh, kudos to you. Uh, I do track these. I, I guess Rex doesn't put little orange dots on every meeting that's, uh, supposed to be canceled. There was none on the 31st. There were one on the 6th of July, one on the 27th, 3rd of August. In the September, I have, I have the 7th and 28th both till September. You have two meetings off there total, which I think is time sufficient. Um, I, if I recall, there's what 37 meetings and then when you start canceling a few or whatever and add a few. Um, I, I, I think that is necessary to get your work done, especially with the COVID. And if you do have extra time, uh, on the, uh, 31st, I highly recommend that you throw out the whole general plan because it was, is not up to date, is not, uh, coherent in many ways and is really out of date as far as I am concerned. Start over again with that one, maybe on the 31st. Uh, those are my comments. And, uh, you know, I just, I, I just spent a little bit of minimal time at these meetings, I guess, three minutes at a time. But I do find it's important enough to know when meetings are scheduled without making assumptions. What's that make out of you and me when we make assumptions? Anyway, uh, those are my comments on this. Highly recommend you move forward with this one and, uh, and, and do something productive, something special on the 31st. If you think, I have noticed in the past, uh, frequently when you have long meetings, because you have two of them off or two in a row or whatever, it gets to be five or six o'clock. And in my opinion and in public's opinion, the decisions you make at that time are rushed and some of them erroneous. And so I highly recommend you spread your meetings out as far as you can to, to do your job in the most competent manner. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
And thank you for your concern on meetings. All right. So moving on to the next item. Um, department reports, consider making at-large appointments to the Humboldt County Aviation Advisory Committee.
Hi, this is Tracy, Deputy Clerk of the Board. So today before you is to consider making, um, two appointments to the Aviation Advisory Committee for two at-large members. One at-large member, a position, um, occurred due to the resignation of Brian Renner. And the other term expired was Justin Zabel. Attached, you will find four applications and a list to fill those two positions. Um, Justin Zabel does wish to continue to serve. And then there's three new applications. I would like to note that, um, even though these applications are typically invited to this meeting to participate, due to the lack of telling them what time and when we would be available, I did not reach out to them with the specifics. So, um, please consider all of them informed, but probably not on the line.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, all right. So can you, can you remind me, are we doing two seats? Is that what we're doing? Okay. And we have one, two, three, four applications. One is, um, someone to return. I'm going to let Rex jump in first since I see his hand up. And Rex, what's your, what are your thoughts on this? Supervisor Bone? You got to find that mute button there.
Oh, this is.
Thanks. Question, question, question of our clerk. Question of our clerk is, um, Tracy, was Brian Renner just, uh, was he an, he was an at-large also?
Yes, Brian. No.
He wasn't the CDF representative. Okay.
No, he was just at-large.
Okay. Well, yeah, I appreciate, you know, he's been promoted to the big dog at CDF in Sacramento. So good for him. Um, I would, uh, well, I'll tell you, I, I would go for, um, if you want to know, I would go for, um, Mr. Marshall and, uh, Justin Zabel, just because I think, um, they both, I like the idea of having somebody from HSU on there, especially with this new, um, polytech and, and what that's going to bring to the area. So I don't know if there'll be a curriculum items we could get out of that or anything else. But I think the connection to Humboldt State would be good. And I think reappointing, uh, uh, Justin Zabel, because he's been a, uh, a good member for a while and brings a perspective of, uh, being a lesee to us and using the airport. and brings a perspective of, uh, being a lesee to us and using the airport on a regular basis.
All right. Thank you, Rex. Uh, next
Thank you.
is Supervisor Bushnell. Oh, no. Oh, I can't hear you.
I'd like to second Rex's motion. However, I would like to ask Tracy if there are, if we could check and see if any applicants are, um, wanting to talk.
And before there, I mean, I heard him make a recommendation. I hear your support for that. But before we get a motion, I would like everyone to like, to throw out their recommendations first. That's okay. Just want to.
Sure.
Anybody else? Steve?
Wait, can I finish?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Tracy, can we ask if there are any applicants that want to speak before we assume they're not here?
So Supervisor Bushnell, I do see two hands raised in the attendees list, but I cannot verify if those are, um, applications or just public comment. So I would recommend that, um, after your discussion, we take public comment and, um, we'll, we'll be able to find out at that point.
Yeah, and looking at
Okay, well, one of them is not for sure, but I just thought it might change my mind is why I was asking. So thank you.
All right, Supervisor Madron.
Yeah, I agree with Supervisor Bushnell. It'd be nice to know, um, you know, about all the characters that are applying and have a chance to speak. But I will say that I do support, uh, uh, what Rex, what Supervisor Bone said. I support both of those candidates, but I can be convinced otherwise. Um, I just wanted to say, I think Justin Zabel in particular has provided a fantastic, um, benefit to this committee for many, many years. He flies off and out of that airport and really gives his attention to this committee and the responsibilities that it has. And I just want to thank him for his service and very much support him being reappointed.
Okay. Um, I feel similarly about Justin, uh, Mr. Zabel. I've known him many years. Um, um, I was kind of leaning for myself. Julie Benbo was my, was my, where I was going, mostly because I, I thought there would, you know, it'd be really nice to have the tourism eye on things and, and I thought that would be reasonable. But, um, I'm willing to be flexible on that. Um, and Rex, uh, Supervisor Bone, do you mind if we go to public comment before we come back to you? Or do you, do you have something?
No, no, that's, that's fine. And I, and I agree, because I think I had a hard time deciding between Julie and actually Bob Gilbert from, you know, he works for the City of Urich or advertises for whatever. I think the tourism is a great idea. I actually felt really comfortable on the tourism side, um, with Alex Stillman on there, because she is so much of a, uh, advocate for Humboldt County, Arcata and Humboldt County, and does such a great job. I was, I knew, I know she listens to the tourism, well, she listens to everybody. I just, what pushed me over the top, gave me a little bit on David Marshall, was the Polytech and the increased, um, volume if everything works out. And you got to remember, it's a Polytech, there's going to be a curriculum base to that, and we have room out there to do curriculum-based studies on aviation, especially weather-related. So who knows what it might bring? So that, that was where I was going on it.
I like your thinking on that. Okay, so let's move to public comment. Uh, the first commenter is, uh, 0326. Uh, please unmute yourself if you want to comment on this item. That's 0326.
Hi, this is Charles Wilson. I commented on the airport landly, uh, land use, uh, uh, compatibility plan and on the airport master plan for the last, oh, 35 years. Uh, I, as far as the members go, uh, 23 years ago, they didn't have any member on from the, uh, on the advisory, uh, uh, airport advisory committee, uh, from McKinville. Now, the, none of the airport plans, uh, did, and just like the, uh, compatibility plan, had made no concession whatsoever for, from the airport. McKinville, the residents and community in McKinville had to make all the concessions of the restrictions and all this kind of stuff. I gave my 20, 30, 40 pages of comments. Uh, I'm used to all the FAA stuff and everything like that. And I don't think they made a single change in all the comments that I made there. They even wanted to, uh, I commented on putting
I don't want to interrupt, but I, but are you commenting on who we should choose to be on the aviation committee?
Uh, yes, I am, in the sense that I, I do appreciate them reviewing my comments. And I do, uh, like I say, uh, it'd be nice to have somebody from, uh, McKinville or, you know, somebody. It's nice when they're rational and consider comments, and that's all I have to say. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. I, I apologize. I just wanted to make sure we're staying on the subject matter, which is who we're going to put on the aviation committee. Uh, uh, public member, uh, 7454, this is your turn, Steve.
Thank you for my opportunity to speak. I did, uh, do some vetting on this particular one and reached out to some people that were on this committee before, whose opinion I, uh, value greatly. And the one thing that was brought to me, um, let's see, Dave Marshall is an aircraft owner and pilot, who I believe is recently retired, is head of IT at HSU, or at least some senior position in IT. Uh, so anyway, I, I strongly support from my vetting, uh, Rex Bone's, uh, nomination or suggestion that David Marshall be appointed there. As far as I've been able to vet, he's someone who can get along well with people and would be a good addition to that bringing your, and of course, you know, I, I spoke with Tom Madsen years ago, or seems like years ago. And one thing we really would like to see happen up there at that airport in between the partnership with HSU is have a pilot school in here. Uh, in other words, this is a technological thing. I think there's a great need for it. It's a red premium premium. And I think that this particular nomination could bring that to fruition. I'd look forward to working with Dave if I had the opportunity. I also support strongly Julie Benbo. Um, I think that one of the biggest things we really lack, as far as, we had an earlier topic today, as far as marketing, is to really bring that tourist business in over our airport. And I think that that addition might enable us to, um, fill up some space we have up there. I think we have empty space on the restaurant and, and, and set the whole tourism thing. That's what this is all about. This is a tourist hub. And, you know, improvements to the airport to make it more friendly. Um, so anyway, those are the two people that I strongly support. I'm not going to say anything negative about, uh, anybody in particular. There was, was one individual on here who had a wedge conflict of interest, uh, due to, and of course, we went through that with the potential of losing all our funding out there that we'd already saved out there. So that, that was a contention. We just want to avoid those. But therefore, I would, I would highly recommend that you consider David Marshall and Julie Benbo. That's my input.
Thank you, uh, for that. And, uh, Supervisor Bone, do you mind if I, uh, let, uh, staff jump in here? Because there's a hand up from Tracy.
All right.
Um, I just wanted to let you know that Director Rogat was on the call earlier and was willing to contribute to this conversation. However, he had a travel engagement, but, um, he would also be available at other time if any of you had questions for him.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right, bringing it back to the board, Supervisor Bone.
Yeah, and, and to answer a couple things, um, I believe, um, Justin Zabel lives in McKinleville, so that will solve one of the questions asked today. And then the other thing is, is about filling up the spaces. And, and thing is, if, if, when you read the agenda, you'll, you'll notice today that we passed on item 10 on the consent, a 30 hours a month through our Economic Development Department, um, uh, basically SOAR, which is sourcing new opportunities for new airport revenues. So we're going to have, we're going to have, um, and we, we voted yes on that. And, um, that's really going to play well, um, into that with Scott Adair and his team, working with Cody. They've been working on this for a couple of months, longer than that, to make this happen. So I think what we're going to do is, is something as minor as the restaurant and the coffee shop and, and being able to, and the car rentals, and basically coming up with, what are we going to do with the rental, the, the parking lot? How much money do we want to give up? Because that's, that's, there's finances there. So I think, and the open space, we, we saw what a great job we did on the microgrid, and, and hopefully that works out. But we do have room out there for further business interests. So I think that 30 hours through economic development is going to fill that bill. And economic development will look at tourism and everything else. So I, 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 what I'd like to do is I'd like to make a motion for, uh, David Marshall and Justin Zabel for the, uh, Airport Advisory Committee.
All right, sounds like we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
And a second from Supervisor Madron. I think we've talked this one out. Appreciate the conversation. And Rex, you're correct, there's a lot of opportunity out at, um, the airport there. I'm hoping that if, uh, this, uh, for, uh, Mr. Marshall, uh, can help us in leveraging, uh, resources from Humboldt State for education and, and, um, and academic stuff, that'd be really great. So with that, um,
Well, and Mike, just, just to add to that, or Chair Mike, or Chair Wilson, Vice Chair, whatever you are. Um, I, I think the idea, I know, that I know President Jackson flies in and out of there, both commercially and privately. So he's, he's very aware of the situation up there. And I just, I want to thank Economic Development and our CIO team, because they brought this back, they brought this to us or started working on this, uh, months ago under Amy's toage, and then under Alicia's, they've, they've gone forward and brought that item today that we voted on. So I think that's really going to do what we've been wanting to be done with the airport and give it some eyes to be looked at. So I appreciate, yeah.
I appreciate that, Rex, but it's not the item we're talking about right now. We're just talking about getting the, this person going.
I understood. Okay. I understand. I just, kudos where kudos are wanted, needed.
Yep, yep. I got you. All right. Are we guys, everybody ready to vote here?
Okay, great. Supervisor Madron.
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
No, yes.
And Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
As is 4-0.
All right, great. Moving on to the next item, consider making at-large appointment and alternate appointment to the Project Trellis Committee. All right, because, uh,
Okay, I'm back.
Who's going to talk about that? Staff?
Yep. So, um, that item's coming from the Clerk of the Board's office as a board appointment from, um, your Board of Supervisors. So on the 13th, you were notified that there was an at-large vacancy and an alternate vacancy on the Project Trellis Committee. So the, um, applications were accepted and you have a list attached. So there is going to be two, uh, positions. One is a voting member, and the other is an alternate member. And again, um, I did not reach out to them about a time when they would be able to speak on this item. I did confirm with Dr. Thomas Handworker, who is currently an alternate, that he would like to be considered for the at-large member. And then I did confirm with Pete Oringer, who had sent his application in previously, and that he would still be interested.
Okay. So you haven't, you know, just for clarification, you haven't heard from Chris Columbine on this?
Well, actually, Chris is a new applicant that was, um, recommended, so he definitely wants to be considered as well.
Okay, I see. Nice. I appreciate that, that.
Sure.
All right, um, Rex, do you want to jump in first? Looks like you got your hand up.
Yeah, that's fine. I, I would like to move. I had talked to a few people and they were kind of happy that Dr. Hand, uh, Handworker would move up into the voting position. And then, um, I definitely know Pete, uh, I'll put Pete Oringer in there, um, just because I know he'll put the time and the effort in.
Okay, uh, do we have another, um, uh, comment from supervisors before I move to public comment? Um, I, I differ a bit on this, for what it's worth. I, I agree with, um, uh, Dr. Handworker, although I, I thought Chris Columbine's experience was more relevant than that was me. Um, I don't have a track record necessarily in that regard. It's just looking at the resumes in general. But I'm happy to, um, to consider all options. And so with that, if there's anybody else that wants to talk, Rex, you want to talk before I take a public comment?
Yeah. The only, the only thing I was wondering, do we have a residency requirement? Because I know that he lives in Sonoma County. So is it just anybody from anywhere can through the, in Tracy?
So we did check with, um, Economic Development and with County Council, and there is no, um, there is no residency policy. So, um, Mr. Columbine would be, um, acceptable.
I'm going to move this to public comment. We'll bring it back if that's okay. All right, we have public comment from 7454. This is your time, Steve.
I'd like to, uh, pre-second Rex Bone's nomination here. It is a little disturbing that you could have somebody participating this from anywhere in the world, it sounds like. If there's no residency thing on there, maybe you'd check into that in the future. So, uh, yeah, I think those two, uh, both, I know Pete Oringer, and he seems to be someone who can work well with people. And I'm going to trust your determination that Dr. Thomas Handworker has already worked well with people. It's kind of like a, a natural succession progressing, but I see, seems to work quite well and to move, uh, move him up and then move Pete in that slot. Since Pete did take the time to make application before and has shown a long-term interest in the project like both of them have. Don't know anything about Chris at all. So I guess I only know about people who reside in, uh, this county. Maybe opportunity to speak.
All right then. I think that, oh, well, we have another public comment, um, ending in 6228. This is your opportunity to speak. 6228, uh, unmute yourself, please.
Good afternoon, Supervisor. This is Madeline Galap from HCGA. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, awesome. Um, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. I was under the impression that there's been other resignations that, that there was a space opened for District Four, as well as an at-large and an alternate. So I wasn't sure about that. Um, secondly, I want to absolutely, um, give our, our recommendation for Dr. Thomas Handworker. He, of having been a participant during, um, Project Trellis Committee hearings, he's absolutely been a really, um, engaged and useful gentleman. Um, and it is kind of awkward to say, but I would not recommend Chris Columbine, whatever his last name is exactly. One, he is a Santa Rosa, Sonoma County resident, but also has, um, was part of Pacific Expeditors, which was a really large distribution company that went bankrupt and took a lot of cannabis operators' money with them. So, um, I would take a gander to say that he would not be well-regarded in this community. And, um, yeah, just that. And so, and if there are additional seats open and other vacancies, please let people know so that if there are other spaces, um, people can apply. Thank you so much.
All right. Do we have any more public comment? And I will say, good information there. Thank you very much. Um, so I'm definitely not going to be recommending, um, Mr. Columbine as we move forward. So it looks like we have two left. And so, uh, Tracy, you had your hand up. I just, I'm sorry for, to supervisors when a staff person is jumping in. Usually it's a process issue. Yeah. You got to turn on.
I did want to clarify that there, um, in the next news agenda, there are two resignations in, and, um, District Two and Four. District Two will be filled, and so there is one at-large for District Four still pending.
Great. Thank you so much for that information. Rex, I can't remember if you made the motion, and if you haven't, this would be probably a good time to do that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we nominate, um, our move up or Dr. Thomas Handworker into the voting position and put, uh, Pete Oringer in as the alternate.
All right. And Michelle, you have your hand up?
I'm all second.
All right. Is there any other comments? I think this is good, good choices. We're ready to, ready to rock. Uh, let's hear the vote.
Okay, Supervisor Madron.
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
And Supervisor Wilson?
Yep.
As is four zero.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda, and I want, I want us, actually, I think this is probably a good time. We're going to take just a 10-minute break at this moment, because when we come back, I believe Supervisor Bass will be back. Is that correct, Alicia? Do you think that's correct?
Yeah, she said she needed about 20 minutes a little bit ago, so that would probably be great timing.
Okay, why don't we take a 15-minute break just to make sure that she's able to come back? Because in the next item, we need a four-fifths vote. And so I just want to make sure we're doing our best to have everybody in that, in that conversation. And I'm just looking, I think that this is our last open item for the day. Is that correct?
That is correct. Following this item, we'll go into closed session.
Okay, so I think this is an appropriate time. We'll take a 15-minute break. We'll come back. Supervisor Chair Bass will be back in the game. All right. We'll see you at 2:15.
Okay, so it looks like we are on the item from the County Administrative Office, which is departmental and is regarding the American Rescue Plan Act funding recommendations and administration of economic impact grant. Mike, you might want to do this if my voice goes away. So, Alicia.
Thank you very much, Chair Bass. I'm going to share my Can, can you see the presentation, the master presentation?
Nope.
No. Of course not. All right, bear with me one moment.
I couldn't tell. Were we supposed to be able to see the graph when we were going over the stuff with the public health?
Okay, can, can you see the presentation now?
Yep.
And it's the master, doesn't have my notes and.
No, we saw a cute picture of your kids, I think, but now we're on the, we're on the spending plan.
Okay.
First day of school.
Okay, thank you, Chair Bass, members of the board. I'm Alicia Hayes, Acting County Administrative Office. Today's agenda item is regarding your board's American Rescue Plan Act spending plan, potential funding requests, and administration of a small business and nonprofit grant program. On March 11th, President Biden signed into law nearly 1.9 billion coronavirus relief bill known as the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. This is the sixth COVID recovery measure Congress has passed since last March. This bill established the local coronavirus relief fund and includes robust, direct, and flexible support to counties and cities. 65.1 billion was allocated to counties. 7.6 billion went to California counties particularly. Humboldt received its first of two allotments of 13.1 million in early June. Cities are also receiving funding through small, though small cities receive their funding through the states. This slide shows the State Department of Finance estimates of funding for cities in Humboldt County, and this is their allocation over the two-year span. In May, the U.S. Treasury issued guidance on how the funding can be used, and it established these four broad categories. When it comes to interpreting eligible uses within these categories, Treasury guidance states that these funds are intended to provide economic stimulus in areas still recovering from the economic effects of the pandemic. This agenda item focuses on funding that would be assessed for eligibility under the negative economic impacts category or government services. On June 8th, your board approved a tentative ARPA spending plan broken down into these three categories. For this plan, 7.89 million is available for small businesses and nonprofit grant programs. Under the rules, category two expenses equalling roads are tied to the county's revenue losses, which is a calculation staff are still working on. In addition, while the Senate just this morning passed an infrastructure bill, Senator Padilla is working with Senator Corin on a bill that would allow roads as an eligible expense under ARPA. In all, the amount of funding available for roads has not yet been determined. Staff will return to your board with a supplemental budget and including county eligible costs such as roads at a later date. Recommendation number two is to approve sole sourcing the administration of the small business and nonprofit grant program and approving priorities for that funding. Last April, your board approved agreements with the Humboldt Area Foundation, AEDC, and REDEC to administer COVID relief funding to small businesses through the county's headwater fund loan and grant program. These agencies quickly and effectively distributed funding to the eligible entities. Last year, economic development staff administered more than 3 million in CARES Act funding, creating more than 700 agreements with local eligible entities. This was taxing on staff and administration of an additional larger grant program that was not included in the fiscal 2122 budget would be cumbersome. Therefore, staff recommends your board approve the sole sourcing with these agencies for the administration of your board's ARPA Small Business Grant Program. Last year, while staff were administering the Small Business Recovery Program and working with partners on COVID relief efforts, staff through community outreach and employer interviews identified three priority areas for funding, including housing, childcare, telehealth, and broadband. Staff believes these priorities remain critical to our community and is recommending that your board approve creating a small business grant program that prioritizes these areas. Recommendation number three is to approve a supplemental budget of $53,000 for forgiving debt of general relief clients who were unable to work off their GR loan debt between March and June of 2020. This recommendation requires a four-fifths vote by your board. It's important to note that this funding is not for county services, but to pay debt owed to the general fund on behalf of general relief clients. Recommendation number four is regarding other funding requests already received by outside agencies and whether your board wishes to fund these requests now to extend, allow, to the extent allowable by the Treasury guidance. The requests are summarized in Attachment Three. And each letter requesting funding is also attached in your board packet. The total amount of funding requested is 3.449 million and would fall into the Category One or the Small Business and Nonprofit Grant Program should your board approve spending through ARPA. If all requests are funded to the maximum amount detailed in their letters, that would leave 4.449 million for the grant program. I will note that the Harbor District previously requested 6 million in funding for this project, and this spending plan would provide 1 million in fiscal year 2122. All ARPA funding received by the county this year must be obligated by December 31st, 2024. Obligated means that it needs to be placed for property and services contracts and sub-awards made. With that, I'll conclude the staff report and will gladly answer any questions your board may have.
Thank you, Alicia. Are there any questions at this point for staff? See Supervisor Bone? And then Wilson? Rex?
Yeah, I was wondering, on the Visitors Bureau, since earlier today, we approved 517,000 or whatever for that. Is this an addition or is this, would this be not as needed? Or had they planned on the 517 and asked for the other six? Do you have an answer to that?
Yes, this would be in addition to the funding that they already receive through their annual general fund contributions.
And then to our CIO, I'm looking at what we agreed, or I guess, priority fundings was housing, childcare, and telehealth and broadband. And I just, I noticed some of the requests are, I mean, they're nice, but I just, I don't know if that meets our criteria. I know the, I really enjoyed the one from first five, because they, the first thing they said is they would leverage their funds for state and federal matching and exceeding funds. And I, I think it's been brought up more than once today by fellow supervisors. The one thing we're missing is the childcare segment for some people to get back to work in the, in this COVID situations, especially with this schools being the way they are, even though they look like they're going back now. So I would, and then the Humboldt Bay Harbor, even though I, you know, I'm fully in support of the wind and fully supportive of the fish project, they both sound like economic home runs for us. Are they gonna, when they go to fruition, I guess we'd get our money back through property tax? Or, or could we make those loans, low-interest loans to them to get that done because they're going to be swimming in it? That's, I, because the, the windmills and the fish farm are highly profitable from what it, what it sounds like.
Um, there, so the, the priorities laid out in today's board report of housing, childcare, telehealth, and broadband, we are asking for you just to identify these as priorities. So it still does leave some flexibility to address other applications that may have positive economic impacts on the community. I would also say that my preference in these funding requests would be to have them follow the same application and evaluation process that all other applicants would go through and to refer these over to the sole-sourced agencies to review that. We also still, before we're able to really greenlight any of these requests that we have so far, we need to continue to study the guidance that's coming from the Department of Treasury. Because similar to CARES, it does sort of change almost daily, and we continue to receive clarification and additional details on what actually qualifies as counties and agencies work through these funding sources.
And then one last question to the chair. On these infrastructure bills that are passing, and it comes into housing, we have met with, with guys that are building, the developers and things like that. The one thing they say is the hardest thing for them to do is if they want to build two or three or four houses, is the infrastructure part of it. I mean, I, I saw a house being built by me the other day and I stopped and it was not going to have any natural gas because it was a $25,000 fee to hook up to natural gas. I'm seeing other subdivisions, you know, four and five-house subdivisions, that the infrastructure is so expensive that it would put the houses, houses out of, out of reach for people to buy in that neighborhood and really out of reach for affordable housing. We keep saying affordable housing, but that word's gone out the window. So I'm just wondering, are any of these infrastructure bills allowing for housing infrastructure so we could maybe get ahead of it and, and get some of these areas that we've deemed available for housing and build the infrastructure for them to make it a little more accessible? I didn't know if that was in any of these infrastructure bills that are being talked about. Because there are only a trillion and a half trillion.
Through the chairs, this specifically relates to ARPA. It is more focused on broadband and water infrastructure over housing. But again, the guidance does continue to evolve. And there is legislation, legislation that's working to provide some additional flexibility in how it can be used for infrastructure needs. So we definitely need to continue studying that and monitoring that. And there is also, in addition to that, there's COVID funds outside of ARPA and other funding sources that may be able to be tapped for some of these requests that we've already received. So we would certainly work with these agencies and with the sole-sourced administrators that we're proposing to capitalize on all funding sources where possible.
Right. Supervisor Wilson?
Thanks for coming together. And I support the staff recommendations, and I think that's a good direction to go. And I do understand this list, under recommendation four, is just basically things that have been talked about, right? And, and they'll go through a process, and I want to hit on a couple of things on the list in no particular order, just because they're on this. But the Visitors Bureau request, I just, I, what I, what I'm hearing from people visiting isn't that they feel like there isn't someplace to go or something to see, is that there's no capacity for them to stay. And, and places for them to be to stay the night. And I think one focus we, I think we need to get on, I think, is, is figuring out capacity that doesn't impact our housing availability. And the more pressure we see in that, the more pressure we're going to see in conversions to short-term rentals, which move housing capacity, you know, moves away from our housing capacity. And I would like to make, I would like to see us to look at some strategies on how to expand where, or increase density and/or capacity for visitor, visitor-serving spaces to be, I guess, is what I'm saying. Again, I think, I don't want to do that and impact housing. And I would like it maybe if one helps supplement the other. And I do believe that also, that first five is always important, you know. Those of us who've been, almost all of us have been on first five board here and, and and realized that just that is just, just the biggest investment. But it has, it has a, it has a capacity issue that really has been hit by COVID.
Mike, I don't think we can hear you.
And a part of our business development community that we need to be supportive of as possible. And I would love, love, love to see some capacity building in that regard. Even if it's like, we've done business park models for, say, like an arcade for, for Food Works, and we do it for cannabis. We co-locate these things and startup businesses in those spaces. And I really wish we would look at the entrepreneurial support that we can, that we can provide to that as a business sector, which I think will translate to frankly, higher wages within that, within that sector too. Again, it's one of those spaces where because of, I would say, gender bias associated with, with the kind of work that it is, it doesn't pay as well. And I mean, this is traditional, and we're all trying to move away from that. And, and anything we can do to help rebuild what that impact from COVID, to bring that back and to build it even better would be great. I'm very supportive of that. Of course, I'm supportive of the Arcadia community pool in, in that effort. Going to the Harbor District part of this, and I think Rex is hitting on something, which is, I think there will be a payback if things are going to go well. But part of that payback is again, referencing the first five, is that what the district is asking for is leveraging funds. So understanding that that, the monies that they're asking for are to leverage more monies to come in, not just revenue from those things, but, but monies from the federal and state government and to show that we are a community that's matching a lot of those things. And so I'm hoping that in that application process, whatever that may be, that that's, that shows what it is. And we've done that with the airport. Oh, my gosh, you know, all the monies that we've, we've, we've invested as a county into the airport has, you know, more than 30 times come back in terms of, in terms of investments that have come back to the community related to, related to matching funds for those things. And so that's important. And the Arts Council, I believe they have a case to make for sure. There's a big hit that we've had in our arts community, and it's a big part driver for what it is we are as a place, that who, what it is that people want to see and be a part of when they, when they visit here where we are. So that's where I'm at on, on, on all this stuff. And, and I wanted to thank you, the staff, for the recommendation number three, which is approving the budget, funding to pay the current debt for general relief clients that lived through COVID. Everyone else got a loan paid back, you know, multimillion-dollar companies, billion-dollar companies got, you know, all their loans paid back. Everyone else got their loans paid back. But the very, you know, the very poorest among us are asking for that same consideration. And I think that this will, this will do this, and it's, it's not much. And so I'm thankful that you guys have that in there. And with that, those are my comments.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Wilson. I have Supervisor Bushnell, and then Madron, and Supervisor Bone, your hand is up again. So I didn't have it down before, but we'll start with Michelle and Steve, and then back to Rex if there's a question.
Thank you through the chair. Alicia, for the Thank you through the chair. Um, Alicia, for the visitor bureau in Eureka, it's $516 through the other agenda item, but is 350,000 of that pass through money for TOT funds?
No, these would be separate dollars. So
not this 600,000, they were funded earlier, their contract was 500 and something. But 350 of that is pass, pass through, correct?
That is correct. Those are, are derived from TOT funds.
So that, out of that funding, they get around 135,000 for themselves. Somewhere around there, I think.
Scott Adair, can you clarify the funding breakdown in the HCCBB contract?
Yes, I'd be happy to through the chair. The Humboldt County Visitors Bureau, they receive an allocation which is equal to 18% of the TOT collective revenues. They also do receive and pay unto the allocations which are paid out to the gateway communities as per the MOU for marketing with those gateway communities.
So I guess what I'm asking um, is that they don't retain all that money for utilization for them?
That's correct. The, the structure by which the Visitors Bureau will still be required to pay uh, allocations out to the gateway communities will still remain the same under the amended agreement that your board previously ratified earlier today.
Okay. And then, um, thank you. And then um, I had a, so when we had this discussion a while back in another meeting, we were going to find out about the Arcata Community Pool said, the city of Arcata said they weren't able to subsidize with COVID funds because it was outside of the Arcata District. And I think we found out different. Can you, let, um, let me know that?
I, yes, I, I think that there was an opinion that possibly Arcata could help to pitch in with that expense. And we can certainly reach out to the city of Arcata and see what their plans are with their funding sources. And if they're, you know, able to meet us in the middle and in some regard.
So they, they, uh, the city of Arcata had COVID monies come to them, correct?
Correct. All of the cities.
Right. And so this would fall under, this, this would definitely fall under a category that they would be able to help fund that pool. Is that, is that correct?
Potentially, yes. Again, we're still studying the guidance from the treasury to be sure that, that this request in general is an applicable request. But uh, the, the cities are under the same guidance that the counties are under. So if it's applicable, it would be applicable for both agencies.
Okay. And then additionally, I, I was just trying to find, but I had seen an article, I think it was from McGuire yesterday, that some funding came through for the arts. Can anybody confirm that? It would be different than this funding. Did anybody read that?
The, yes, I, I mean, I'm not, I'm definitely not an expert in it. But um, as I mentioned earlier, there's many of these applications that we've received already may have other opportunities for COVID funding and other outside funding sources. So we can, you know, include in the contracts with the sole sourced agencies that there be some evaluation on how best to capitalize on all funding sources available. And work with the agencies to, you know, pursue other avenues if possible so that we maximize the overall dollars coming into the county.
Okay. And, and lastly, I just wanted a clarification for Humboldt, for the, our roads, Humboldt County roads. What, when would we know if um, they are able to get any of this funding to help subsidize?
So the troublesome part about the roads is that it, for county services and expenditures, it's tied to revenue losses. And when we originally formulated this proposal, we knew that the gas tax dollars were incredibly low and had high hopes that we could tie a roads contribution specifically to that funding source as it is a, a significant funding source for the roads department. Uh, since the guidance has indicated that the loss of revenue has to be calculated as an organization as a whole. So, so we have to take into account all viable revenue sources that come into the county. So that's a much larger um, evaluation. And we're unsure at this point in time if we will have overall seen a revenue loss um, that can be associated to COVID. So, so, I mean, I would say maybe in the next 30 to 60 days, we will have that evaluated and be able to tie county services to a revenue loss or know if, if that is a possibility. Um, but again, also we still continue to listen to the, to the treasury guidance because they have some legislation that is expanding um, infrastructure allocations and may allow us to get a little bit more creative and venture outside of the broadband and water infrastructure categories that they've, they've currently sort of honed in on.
Okay. So I guess my last question is, is that some of these things that we're able to fund with this money is things that we may have funded out of general fund previously. So then does it um, free up any money? I know that all monies, we don't have enough money in general. But does it possibly free up some monies from the general fund that could be allocated to county roads? If we don't, if the, um, if the criteria doesn't fit, is that something that's a possibility?
That is certainly a possibility, yes. And, and we did similar things with the CARES Act. An example, they, the guidance allowed us to fund substantially dedicated staff and that they deemed public health and sheriff's staff as substantially dedicated. So we were able to shift costs over to the sheriff's department, which was primarily general fund funded in order to free up other general fund dollars for alternate purposes that may not have fallen under the guidance criteria. So we um, certainly evaluate it with a creative eye in looking at how we can maximize a response to overall county needs that have been impacted by COVID.
Okay. You know, um, I, I'm out and about in my community a lot, um, the communities because of my store and blah, blah, blah. And a lot of times I hear travelers say, oh my gosh, that road, I'm never going back there. And so it impacts our tourism hugely by some of the shape that our roads are in, at nobody's fault. But if, you know, if we could find more monies for them, that would be great. Thank you.
Hey, yeah Supervisor Madron and then Wilson.
Yeah, let Michael first.
Okay Supervisor Wilson?
Oh sure, I just want to, I just want to reiterate that it is my full expectation that staff will reach out to the city of Arcata relationship to the pool issue and negotiate about that. And then um, I did hear that there was venue funding that came out, I think may, I don't know if that was what Michelle is referring to, but I do know like there's a Mateel Community Center got some pretty significant chunk of change and some others writing grants for venues. And so that's been helpful. And I think, thank you to everyone who ever worked on those things. It's because, because we're going to need, need those venues on the other side of this.
Supervisor Madron.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad to see you back. Any rate, um, you know, I'm not sure that we're short on visitors frankly. I think that fires and smoke and heat have put out all the advertisement that we need. And as Supervisor Wilson mentioned early on, it's not the problem of getting enough visitors here. It's a problem of what do we do once they're here? And what happens to our housing stock as the pressures for short term rentals and other things develop because of that? So, you know, I'm, I'm thinking this 600,000 here in the budget for the Visitors Bureau is actually in addition to what we normally do, if I'm reading all this correctly. And so I just don't see the need for that frankly. There's, you know, we're getting overrun with visitors. We don't need to market it. But, you know, it's important for us to have the marketing for, for a lot of visitation services and all the rest of it. So I'm not trying to speak against that. It's just, you know, we only got so much money and we've got to prioritize things. So where do we put that? And it's my observation that roads often will be brought up early with lots of money. And then over time, the amount that goes to roads just dwindles down and goes away and we have nothing there. I wanted to provide another uh, argument for you folks that are doing this work and doing the evaluation. And I, I want to key in on the word that Alicia used, creativity. The roads department has not only taken a hit from the reduction in the gas tax, but a tremendous amount of the work that we do on our roadsides in terms of vegetation management is because we have, we used to have swap crews. So during the pandemic, the swap crews were almost entirely eliminated because the courts were not sentencing people to jail time, which is how you end up getting into swap. So instead of sentencing them to jail time, which created a large swap crew, uh, they were basically cited and released. So we lost revenue in the roads department because of the pandemic shutting down the swap program. And basically, if you take a crew of about 10 people from swap, which we had much more than that. We had times have 20 or 30 people in swap working for the county with the roads crews, doing a lot of the work that the mower can't do. You know, there's places where you've got to go in with handwork to do it. And frankly, if we had the swap crews getting out in front of the mowers, the mower wouldn't hit the, uh, the posts and the tire and the rock and break down at a cost of $10,000, $20,000 for repair and it doesn't come back for a month. So I'm speaking very strongly for maintaining a very large budget out of this money for roads because we all use them. And uh, it did take a massive hit in reduction because of the swap program. So I offer that to you as a creative way of making the argument about lost revenues for roads. And, and if you think about where we're at, I think it was earlier Supervisor Bushnell mentioned, right now in our world, it's all about water, fire, and I guess pandemic, right? We'll add that third one. Well, when you think about fire and you look at the condition of our rural roads here in Humboldt County, they are severely overgrown with brush. And one of the prime ways that fires start is along roadsides from chains dragging or sparks from wheels going flat or cigarettes or whatever. And so there's all kinds of ramifications from not taking care of the vegetation along our roads, let alone the condition of the road surface and drainage and the rest of it. So I just want to speak really strongly for maintaining that budget for roads and being creative with those arguments that are very valid about how that eliminated um, funding. And if you do the math, 10 people uh, plus equipment, you're looking at about a million dollars a year for a crew of about 10 people plus equipment. And as I said, we've lost 20 or 30 or more of these folks. Uh, and that's easily 3 million plus that we've lost in revenue for the roads department. And it's putting our roads in a very dangerous condition, putting our communities in a very dangerous condition where road starts for fires could, are highly elevated right now and we really do not need that. We need to get a handle on this. And, you know, I'm researching lots of other sources of funding for roads, but I won't go into that because that's off topic. Uh, I also want to speak very strongly for childcare. You know, I don't think that we're going to be getting out of the situation we're in all that soon. I wish we had everybody vaccinated and we were moving on. But, you know, it looks like we're in this for the long haul. And so a lot of people are going to be working from home. And I'd really love to see the, the cable that's already laid to the schools in our community that goes past people's homes to be able to be tapped into to utilize for people working from home and for parents doing homeschooling. Because while we all hope the schools open up this fall and everything else, I mean, a lot of people may very well choose to keep their kids at home and are going to need that internet connection. So that's fiber that's already there. And so if we could put some staff time into shaking that loose and figuring out how to get that to change, that would be good. Always want to support first five uh, in a big way. Uh, but also childcare, if people are going back to work, they are going to need that childcare assistance. So I want to speak very strongly for increasing allocations for childcare uh, through the services within the county that provide that. So that's my main things. Appreciate staff's effort on this. Thank you.
Thank you. I did see Supervisor Bushnell's hand up and Supervisor Wilson's, but they're down now. So I just wanted to make sure. All right. Well, I'm going to go to the public comment then. And Tracy, you got your bell ready?
Yes, Chair Bass.
Okay, just wanted to be sure. All right. So we do have quite a few. Let me just. My computer's like out of mind of its own all of a sudden. Alrighty, well, let's go. We're going to go to the person ending in the last four digits, uh, 4009 followed by 6876. So if you are 4009, press star six to unmute. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Carrie Venegas and I am the Executive Director of Changing Tights Family Services. Um, thank you so much for this important conversation. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to check um, for this important conversation and for all of the support for childcare. So I, I do want to um, really recognize and acknowledge that that's an important part of this uh, of this proposal, that supporting our childcare providers in the county is a tantamount important for our economics, for our school, for our families. And I'm in any support of all that you're doing to recognize that and provide funding for this. I also would like to express that I'm a little discouraged um, that um, Changing Tights Family Service has not been a bigger part of this conversation. Because what we actually do is the resource and referral in our county is childcare recruitment provider support. And we've spent 17 months of this pandemic out in the trenches with our childcare providers. With supplies, support, moral support, we've asked amazing things of our staff who are severely underpaid on state funds. And um, I want to make sure that that work of the past almost 50 years is also part of this conversation. We work super well with first five, they are great partners, we are great partners with them. But I, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize all of that hard work of staff. So thank you so much for supporting uh, that concept and recognizing the importance of it. And really would like to see some of these ARPA funds go to helping our childcare providers do the job that they have been out there doing in the middle of a pandemic at personal rent. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And for anyone who's listening at home and wants to make a comment, uh, please do turn off your volume on your TV. It sounds like we've been having a little confusion with the delay, the time delay. So listen to the phone and you'll be able to know that we're calling on you more quickly. So we'll now go to 6876. If you're a 6876, press star six to unmute.
Hi, my name is Shashana and I'm here to advocate for a new group, the Humboldt Creative Alliance, proposal given to the county to bring in immediate infusion of cat, of $5,000 to each of our nonprofit arts organizations from um, hopefully recently allocated ARPA funding uh, to sorry, uh, to, as the arts and culture support the fiscal, mental and social health of our community. Immediate relief funding for our arts and culture is a critical investment. There has been an attempt to fund arts and culture organizations in our state, but these funds seem to be going to larger organizations focusing on urban arts groups. Um, only a little bit of funding has gone to several of our local um, arts um, organizations in our rural Humboldt County that make just about all of our events and beloved cultural institution, uh, traditions happen. The art sector has been disproportionately affected by the pandemic and funding the arts will jumpstart the long-term recovery and development for our community. Direct investment in our organizations is a great way to maximize the COVID-related money coming to Humboldt right now. The organizations, the Humboldt Creative Alliance identified, large and small, are often the very small teams that directly put on the festivals, lead the parades, bring the joy to seniors and schoolchildren and tell our stories. Even the online and creative modified event pivot organizations have creatively achieved this last year, have only raised the shadow of the funds usually brought in through normal means such as ticket sales, ads, um, sponsorships and other programming. If our industry doesn't get financial help, the crisis will become an education and human service crisis as our programs and services support and uplift schools, hospitals, healthcare, elder, elder care, early childhood development and the underserved. Also, aside, aside from our natural splendor, the vibrant art, local arts and culture sector is a big draw for tourists. So many different organizations are excited about this idea of investment in direct, uh, directly connecting with our organizations. I can list them if I have time at the end. I heard first five mentioned earlier and um, investments in our youngest, youngest people. These events and opportunities are not only for tourists, but also enhance the quality of life for residents of all ages that keep Humboldt a wonderful place to live. If these tiny organizations stayed away due to COVID, it would be tremendously sad for our whole community. This direct immediate financial investment will bring art inspiration, empowerment and a breadth of life that we probably not otherwise uh, receive for our rural community in the mental and emotional um, the wellbeing of our community. Organizations will be able to leverage these funds to seek additional state, federal and funding opportunity. Personally, I'm part of many of our local art, arts nonprofit organizations and see every day the big power and importance of these often very tiny groups. Thank you. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors for seriously considering encouragement, impact, and investments in our arts organizations that this particular opportunity offers. Supervisor Wilson said, "This is what we are as a place." Thanks for listening to the Humboldt Creative Alliance.
Thank you, Shoshana. So our next speaker is 6045. If you're 6045, press star six to unmute. All right. 6045? Tracy, are they? Well, hold on a second. Okay, Tracy, I made a mistake. Which one, did we not do 4036? I'll be so glad when we can be in person again. That's all I can say.
So we did not, but whichever one, let me know and I will unmute them.
Okay, that was my fault and I apologize. We'll go with 4036. It's harder on a small screen, I can tell you that. And then after that will be 6045. So 4036, thank you for your patience there.
No worries. This is Jacqueline Dandino. I'm the Executive Artist, Artistic Director of Playhouse Arts. And I'm just phoning in, in support of the Humboldt Creative Alliance's proposal for funding for smaller organizations here in Humboldt County. As Shoshana said, a lot of times, a lot of the funding is going to, hello? Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear. Actually, Tracy, stop the time for a second. Okay, so the person with the 4036 is the person who's speaking right now, and we'll get back to the next person. So let's restart. There you go, continue.
Anyways, I'm just phoning in to support the Humboldt Creative Alliance's proposal for arts in our county. As with the Arcata Chamber of Commerce recognized Playhouse Arts as, you know, the business leader of the year. And for me, that's a really big step forward in how the arts are so important to economic development, not only in terms of the funding that we bring in statewide and nationally to this county, but also what we do for our, our kids in terms of creativity in thinking outside the box, seniors, health and welfare, mental health, working with the Department of Health and Service, Health and Human Services, and First Five, that the arts play such a vital role in who we are as Humboldt County residents. And like, a lot of the funding is going to organizations and not the artists themselves. And for me, this really is a chance for Humboldt County as one of the few counties in the state of California that don't actually provide funding to their arts organizations to really step up and invest in our artists. And that, for me, will be so important in terms of everything that we do moving forward as a county, and a chance to really shift direction, how artists can be involved in planning and development of a, of a new world. And as we move forward, how that creative thinking can be at the table. And we really need to support artists. We are losing artists at a rapid rate who are now turning to other jobs as they need to survive and support themselves. And I think it's really, I urge the supervisors to really turn towards the artists and support them. You know, the idea that, yes, we need food, shelter, and clothing, and we also need hyacinths to feed our soul and to recognize each other as human beings. And that's what the arts do. They really help turn people towards each other so you can see each other and creatively come to solutions that maybe are not able to be heard or seen, but they can, they can be heard and seen through the arts. On top of that, look at tourism and what the arts do for tourism. For the tourists spend more dollars per tourist than, than just a regular tourist, more dollars per person. And funding artists, smaller local artists. The Shutter Denews Act that was talked about before was, is a great boon. But again, it's for large organizations. I know that the Matil and I know that another organization got shuttered venues funding. I got some shuttered venues funding. And I'm turning around now and how do I support the local artists? And so I'm hopeful that the county will do the same thing, that we can turn around and support our local artists through the funding that's coming through larger organizations. Thank you for all you do for the county. Thank you for all your time and energy and ability to listen to us and hear us from all corners of this amazing place that we call home. I am grateful for your service. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Tracy, 6045 had dropped off, but they're back on. So we'll go to 6045. And just press star six to unmute. All right, 6045, just if you're there, press star six so we don't miss you. Well, I guess we'll move on to the next, come back again. And we'll go on to 7454. And thank you, Noah Lindrell-Hiller. Welcome, Kent.
Virginia, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm darn good at pressing star six. I've had a little practice. I did want to point out on page two of seven at the bottom of the page, one of your most important graphs there, whatever you want to call it, has category and purpose, and that's totally truncated. The public has no idea what your category and purpose is. I wanted to point that one out. I did also above that, I found it quite interesting to see eligible uses. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, Kent. You can take your companion, please.
And one of them is there is to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. Like you say, possibly the definition, the definition of infrastructure in the, in the, coming off the hill there in Washington, it seems to be about anything you want to call infrastructure is infrastructure. So maybe that will be changing. I have no problem with your recommendations. There's a whole bunch of wonderful stuff up there, but I, of course, you know, we, we see all kinds of, there's any kind, I hate to use the term pork, but everybody seems to have their hand up. I was, I was, I saw you have the cities mentioned in here. Do our tribes pull any funding? I think it was supposed to be everything brought to Humboldt County. So if the tribes don't have their own independent funding, which wasn't reflected here, I'm kind of amiss at that. You know, a significant portion of your funding should be split up with the tribes, and they should be invited to have a, no matter what, I think we should have their input as far as how the other money goes because it does affect our tribes, however it is all spent, whether it be in Humboldt County. You do have fee title property within the tribes, and there's things that should be addressed there regarding tribal interests. I did want to point out regarding roads. And my understanding is that there is extremely large lobby back in Washington DC to have the Biden defined road infrastructure in Humboldt County specifically to be strictly for the fifth district because of their good karma. Some of you other people have different hands up, but I always appreciate when a supervisor doesn't list one specific project or road within their district, but overall general concerns such as the remediation of our major problem regarding vegetation along the road. That's a karma issue, isn't it? So anyway, thank you for my opportunity to speak. And I did want to let you know that when I speak nicely at these meetings and things, it's specifically at the request of Steve Madrone. And so I'm following that request as much as I can. When I don't speak nicely, it's for other reasons. So thank you a lot for tuning to speak on this specific topic.
All right, thank you. And before I call the next number, just a reminder, and I think this might be what's happening to one of our listeners, don't listen to us on a video feed. Turn the sound off on your TV or your computer, or you'll be, you won't hear your name being called because there is a time delay. So at this point, we're going to go to 8563. And just press star six to unmute.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Bass and Supervisors. My name is Jessica Osborne-Stathness, and I'm the Project Director for the Humboldt Community Health Trust, which is supported by the North Coast Health Improvement and Information Network. The Humboldt Community Health Trust was funded in 2017 as part of the California Accountable Communities for Health Initiative. And it's a collaborative made up of nonprofits, healthcare partners, treatment providers, community leaders, and government agencies who are committed to holistically addressing substance use disorder in Humboldt County. While we have focused our efforts on substance use disorder, a broader goal of our work is to enhance health system access, coordination, and integration. The need for better integration spans a myriad of complex health and social determinative health focus areas such as adverse childhood experience, behavioral health, healthcare utilization, homelessness, et cetera. These are issues in our community that need intentional partnership, planning, and stewardship to bring transformational change. Along those lines, we would like to applaud the board's support and commitment to children and vulnerable families as they grapple with the impacts of COVID. As an initiative focused on substance use disorder, we do recognize the interrelated Aces and substance, interrelated relationship of Aces and substance use disorder, and are really pleased to hear the board's support around First Five's proposal. We also appreciate the board's consideration that ARPA represents a unique opportunity to address immediate need while also making strategic investments now that will make Humboldt County a healthier and more resilient community in the long term. The Humboldt Community Health Trust would like to call forward the importance of community and stakeholder process and setting intentionality around these funds. When funding is made with limited intentionality and strategy, there's risks of investing in an already fragmented system that only serves to produce more problems and disparities in our community that have already been exacerbated during this pandemic. We are grateful for the board's interest in transparency around resident participation and hope you will consider our proposal around this in that regard. Additionally, we'd like to share that our intent is to work both closely with local stakeholders that are already in this space. And I want to name both the work coming out of public health through the CHON chip process and the strategic framework compiled by the county of Humboldt, which are well aligned and could inform existing community priorities and possible opportunities for investment. We see this as an avenue to advance shared goals across our communities. Thank you very much for your consideration of our proposal and for your conversation around ARPA funds.
Great, thank you, Jessica. So our next speaker would be 5314. So if you're 5314, please press star six.
Hi, this is Paul Beatty. Can you hear me?
Yes, Paul. Welcome.
Hi, I'm calling to support the Visitors Bureau. I think that tourism is really important as it brings in a lot of dollars to the county and increases the TOTs and the sales tax income, or revenue to the county and the cities and everybody, really. I also wanted to share a success story for the Visitors Bureau. Over the past few years, I own the Oldspeople here in Ferndale. And with Keat TV, we produced a TV show called Live from the Oldspeople, and it's now being featured on 14 other PBS affiliates across the nation. So I'm really stoked about that. And so we're getting the word out there with the Visitors Bureau. And without their underwriting of that program, we wouldn't have been able to do that. I really think it's important to continue to fund the Visitors Bureau because tourism rises, rises the water level for everybody, the money coming in for everybody. It's a way to help everybody. And with more money coming into the city, or cities and counties, we'll be able to help our roads and we'll be able to invest in all these other important things, too. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Paul. Our next speaker is last four digits of 2236. And if that's you, press star six. Six to unmute. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. This is Mary Ann Hampton, representing First Five Humboldt. I just want to applaud any investment your board makes to support our vulnerable families with young children, helping families get back to work and support childcare. In recovering from the many mental, physical, and financial health impacts of COVID, childcare is absolutely critical, as so many of your speakers have noted, to the economic well-being of our county. We're excited about engaging with our wonderful partner Changing Tides Family Services and the county in upstream strategic solutions that promote the county's long-term health and well-being. We're also looking forward to hopefully a Humboldt Community Health Trust community engagement process to identify opportunities for transformational investment as a second round ARPA fund. So I just want to wish your board well in your deliberations, and thank you for just the thoughtfulness and commitment you bring to your work for all of Humboldt County residents. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Mary Ann. And if anyone is listening who wants to comment and is not called in yet, this would be the time to call in so you don't miss your opportunity. So we're going to go with the person of the last four digits of 0800. If that is you, press star six and mute. Welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good afternoon, Supervisors. This is Kitra Meyer. I'm the Director of Advancement and Philanthropic Innovation with the Humboldt Area Foundation and Bob Rivers Community Foundation. We are a community foundation that has served Humboldt as well as Trinity, Del Norte, and Curry County in Oregon for almost 50 years. And we submitted a letter to the board with our current strategy and all our learnings that we've learned through our COVID response over the last year and a half, and also shared some suggestive priorities. And I hope you were all able to receive a copy. First, congratulations on the 26 million of vital resources you're bringing into the community, and much appreciation to your staff for all their hard work that they've done on this. I want to take just a minute to express our suggested focus on nonprofits in addition to the business community, as they are a vital part of our community here in our region. Also, these funds allow for a broader approach to those populations that have been disproportionately impacted by COVID, such as our Latinx populations and our Native American communities have been. And so we hope these funds are able to take advantage to address broader programs, such as addressing health disparities and social justice and health, addressing housing, and addressing educational disparities. In addition, we, we hope there's a prioritization on supporting businesses and nonprofits who have been impacted with the focus on Black, Indigenous, and people of color communities. And we're also hoping funds are able to go to continued COVID response. Response mitigation prevention efforts, as we talked about earlier in this meeting, everything is on the rise. And so we do need more funds for responding to the pandemic as it's happening. And we would like a focus of those going on BIPOC and low-income and underserved communities as well. In addition to that, we also support more support for essential workers, our local arts community, and resilience of our region's ecosystems if these funds are allowed. So thank you so much for the opportunity to speak and to be a part of distributing potentially these funds to the community. And I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you. So it looks like we're moving on to our final speaker, and that is 6045. Press star six. Oh, we have one more speaker coming in. 6045, press star six and unmute yourself.
Hello.
There you go. Welcome.
Hi. Well, third time's the charm. I'm sorry for messing up earlier. This is Libby Maynard. I am here to talk about two of these requests. First, the Visitors Bureau, of which I'm the Chair of the Board. And I'd just like to point out that what these funds will do will be bring visitors in the future. So thinking about what there is right now, you know, and not supporting that would be kind of like shooting yourself in the foot because the, you always have to be looking out to the future and building on that future. And those funds will go primarily to marketing for when there isn't a pandemic and when we are working to kind of raise all boats with the tide. We have also, I wanted to note a, an error in the staff report. The Humboldt Arts Council is not the group that has brought forward this request. The Humboldt Cultural Alliance is the group that has been working for months on developing all of this. And the Humboldt Arts Council is included, but they did not participate in developing this ask. So I hope that the error will be corrected. The arts are so important, and they took such a big hit in this pandemic, probably even worse than restaurants because we were allowed to come back for a few weeks, and that was it. And that's not enough time to really get going again. And the arts are so important, not only to the community, to our well-being and health, but also to our visitors that come in. So other people have spoken well about the value of the arts here and the value of the Convention Visitors Bureau, which will be working to bring people in the future and to continue to make all the benefits of money from outside the county coming into the county. And I'd just like to also address quickly that, yes, there are lots of other opportunities, but the arts were hit so hard that but the arts were hit so hard that we need every penny we can get to stay alive. Many have gone out of business already and I thank you for your support. I understand you're not making the decision today and I support the delegation to the other organizations. Thank you.
All right, thank, thank you, Libby. So last speaker is three seven four two. If that's you, press star six to unmute. Welcome.
Hello. Hi, hi, this is Ara Pacmeyer. I'm speaking today to share my support for the Humboldt County Visitors Bureau request from the American Rescue Plan Act. I'm a professor of Tourism Management at Humboldt State University, as well as a member of the Visitors Bureau Board of Directors. So this request will be used for county marketing initiatives for the upcoming fiscal year, and these funds are critical for the Visitors Bureau to grow and support the county at this really critical point in time. So pre-COVID, the Visitors Bureau had a lot of success marketing Humboldt outside the county and attracting, attracting visitors to our area, area. However, it's predicted to take at least five years before tourism can recover to pre-COVID levels. So considering the positive economic visitor spending has had on large and small businesses throughout the county, I believe tourism and the Visitors Bureau will be key to the economic recovery of Humboldt County post-COVID-19. Many other counties and states have come to the same conclusion and have already chosen to disperse federal funding to increase the efforts of their destination marketing and management organizations. The requested funding supports the marketing and growth goals of the Visitors Bureau. And with this funding, the Bureau can ensure that Humboldt is the top rural tourism destination in Northern California and that we're able to be competitive with neighboring counties that have budgets exceeding $1 million. So tourism has greater economic impact beyond the businesses we think of as typical tourism businesses such as hotels or attractions. $1 spent by a traveler has the potential to be spent and re-spent by residents throughout the county on everything from haircuts to pet food to groceries at our local businesses. So supporting the Visitors Bureau in their increased marketing efforts also assists in the county's goal to stimulate local livelihoods and create prosperity for residents. Tourism is all, is not just a means for economic development. It also contributes to improving the quality of life for residents and for building better communities. The Visitor Bureau knows that tourism goes beyond promoting a place and should be helping to build a better place for the people that live here. So by aligning tourism in the county with economic and community development, the Visitors Bureau is ensuring that it's telling an authentic, inclusive and respectful story about Humboldt County and our communities that resonates with visitors and ultimately results in positive visitor sentiment about Humboldt County. So visitors are going to come back, they're going to spend money at our local businesses, they're going to tell their friends who will visit us and so on. Lastly, the Visitors Bureau has taken steps to partner with the chambers and develop new collaborations with stakeholders throughout the county, really to ensure that all regions of Humboldt County can thrive. With this funding, the Visitors Bureau will be uniquely poised to support tourism as a critical economic driver for Humboldt County and ensure the success of our county and our communities. Thank you, Supervisors, for your time.
All right, thank you. And if you are three two nine zero, press star six to unmute.
Hi there, this is Jemima Har and I'm the Executive Director of the Humboldt Arts Council and the Morris Graves Museum of Art. I am calling in support of the Humboldt Creative Alliance and support for all of our arts organizations. Just like many industries, the arts have been hit very hard by the pandemic, from facility closures, programming cancellations, reduction of staff and reduction of income. The arts are still feeling the impact of the last year and a half. Humboldt County's claim to fame is the arts. It attracts tourists from far and wide. It offers cultural activities to our communities and it adds significantly to our local economy. Many organizations partner with our local schools, enriching our curriculum for the students throughout the county. This year, Humboldt County is seeing a 68% reduction in funding from the California Arts Council. With that will come closures of theaters, galleries and art centers, and we all depend on these to enrich our lives. This is a critical time for arts organizations and a critical time for Humboldt County to support and invest in the arts. Thank you guys for all that you do. I sure appreciate it and hope that you'll consider the arts as you move forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jemima. And that is the end of our callers. So go back to the board. I know Supervisor Wilson had expressed support of the item as it was. Don't know if he would like to take up, kick off this conversation, but I'm picking on you.
I can do that. I'll just make, I'll make the motion that we take into consideration the discussion we've had today, move forward to support staff recommendation.
Is there a second? Well, I can second it because I'd actually really like to know what the others are thinking. I like, I'm fine with it. Thank you. Time delay. That's better. Now we'll have discussion. So we have a motion that was seconded for staff.
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll speak to my motion, which is, I think we discussed everything that's in this report. We discussed our thoughts on that. All of the, that list is going to go through a process that will be vetted and will have a process associated with it. I think, I think so far those, those processes have worked well. I think I'm putting trust in our staff and organizations that will do that to do a good job, and so that's why I support staff recommendation.
Thank you. Any other Supervisors have a comment? They'd like to add? Well, if not, we can just go and do the roll call though, Tracy. I'm not seeing any hands up. Please.
Thank you. Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madrone?
Yes.
Great, it passes five zero. Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. And thank you for everyone who called in with some great comments and ideas. And thank you staff for being working on this so hard. So I believe we are now on to our closed session items. Is that correct? And given that, I'd like to ask County Council Billingsley to brief us on closed session.
Thank you, Chair. It's the intention of the board to meet in closed session on three items. They are all existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1. The first is Lily versus County of Humboldt, case number 19 CB 07941-NC. The second is Manui versus Toujin et al., case number 21 CB 202840-RMI. And the last is County of Humboldt versus Purdue Pharma, case number 118 CB 04375. And Mallinckrodt Bankruptcy Case Number 20-12522.
All right, thank you. And we do have one number, the public who has their hand up to comment on this item. And that would be seven four five four. Press star six.
I'm glad you made it back, Virginia. I did, I have a dog named Lily. Is she Selina County here on that first one? I don't know. If she, if my dog named Lily is Selina, I highly recommend you settle. You've got expert legal counsel. Sometimes your litigation here seems to be a little bit of a joke, but we've got a Menovich, another one being existing litigation versus somebody else. And somehow I guess you are an et al. in there. Not really clear how that's titled, that you'd even be involved in that without an et al. I guess it's your Toujin et al. That must be your the et al. there. I'd settle those. You have a conference and you have Purdue Pharmaceutical et al. And the county apparently is suing them, but it's a bankruptcy case. And my guess is probably we wasted our time. That's probably having to do with, oh, the nasty white stuff there, whatever that stuff is that Purdue had been putting out. A lot of times you have to do risk management and I hopefully you're not spending too much money on one that's going to go through a bankruptcy court and have nothing available there. That must be have to do some with occupancy, I guess. And then I wanted to mention that I, you know, I had requested, you know, and of course a little too late that you discussed enclosed session not happening here. I guess my complaint to you regarding not having the right kind of format to be Brown Act compliant with the, with the county's thing there. You're still on the screen and it's still all screwed up and we can't tell what anybody's doing or see what's happening there. So it doesn't look like that's going to change for a while. So, and then there'll be a long list of other things that will be litigated in the future. So I could give you a crystal ball, but that's not the agenda. We'll do that some other time, one at a time, a whole bunch of them. Bye-bye.
All righty, with that, we will leave. County Council, Billingsley, how long do you think we should expect to be in there before we report out?
Uh, not long, Chair, maybe 10 to 15 minutes.
Okay. All right, so we'll shoot to the, we'll try to be back here somewhere around 15 minutes. So, all right, see you in closed session.
I just moved Michelle over.
Okay, so we got three. So County Council Billingsley, do we have a report out of closed session?
Yes, Chair. On items M1 and M2, the board voted unanimously to authorize the risk manager to answer in agreement with the Mitchell Bristle Law Firm for defense of the two appeals. And on item M3, there is no reportable action.
All right, well, with that, we are adjourned.